Pretty warm in here.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if everybody will start finding their seats so we can get started.
Okay, good evening, everyone. One quick piece before we get started tonight I failed to mention last night is that staff will start to be rolling out the projections for water rates for review. First meeting will be held on February 26th. Please check the website for the time and location. That's still being confirmed at this time. All right, we have been in recess since approximately 11:00 PM last night. I'm going to try to call these in groups of about three, so when your name is called, please get ready to come on up. If you're not here tonight, there will not be another night, I hope, but we'll see where we are. For those who needed to leave because of weather concerns last night and did not speak, but I called your name, that group will be called at the end, once I've gotten through the whole system at least once. We're on, for sign up, we were at number 21, and we have approximately 70, so we'll try to get through these. Reminder, each person has three minutes. When you come to the mic, please make sure you speak clearly into the mic. Any comments or questions you have, address them to me. Reminder, the contractor, you're responsible for capturing all of your questions, and our staff will capture those for us. Okay? All right, first three people, Lupi Martinez, Karen Clavety, and Charles Ragsdale. That will be the first three up. Is Lupi here? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lupito Martinez, and I have some points that I want to share with you guys this evening. The first one, I'm a resident of Westminster, and I have worked for the past 10 years as a nanny for several families in Westminster. Second, I'm supporter of the proposed change to the comprehensive plan that I have read about on Nextdoor post. Third, I'm most excited about the prospect of a neighborhood that will be able to provide as most connection to parks, trails, and purpose in this plan. Pushing a stroll in Westminster is a challenge. Either you have to use the streets or less than ideal sidewalks. I look forward to welcome new families to Westminster, and I hope you can let the city council support this amendment. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Karen Clavety, and I would ask you to oppose these amendments onto the comprehensive plan. As far as honoring the comprehensive plan, it seems that something that was created in 2013 really doesn't have as much relevance today in 2020. A lot of people in 2013 were eager to get out of the recession and have a lot of building occur, and now it's 2020, and a lot of people would rather see a lot less construction, a lot less building. I actually lost my home to foreclosure in Denver in 2009 and moved to Westminster, and at this point in time, I would, I don't want to live in Denver anymore. I wouldn't want to live in Denver. It's so overcrowded. There's breathing room in Westminster, and it's one of the nice things about Westminster. I hate to see an iconic space like that farm become a huge, high-density development. That is a special place. We already have, in the comprehensive plan, plans for five targeted areas to become developed, and I think the water and the resources and the energy should be put towards developing those target areas and not towards ruining a very iconic space, which is that farm. We didn't hear from the fellow from Lakewood yesterday, but I was here when he spoke on January 14th, and he had some visuals. And his concern is he goes around and talks about farms in spaces, farms that have been kept and should be kept. They make the places unique, and we have a very unique feature here in Westminster with that working farm. I know the pillar of fire wants to relinquish its ownership of its farmland, but that doesn't mean that a new comprehensive plan, I mean, we were told that, you know, every seven years or so, a comprehensive plan should come about, and we're working off of a 2013 comprehensive plan, and I think there's a lot more interest in changing that plan and changing some of the uses in Westminster. So I would ask that you not support the, if you're going to support a changed plan, then change the plan, but don't change, make little amendment changes to suit the developer.
Kurt Allstott and Karen Ray, you'll be the next two up.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Charles Ragsdale. I live at 8120 Osceola Street, directly south of the new water tanks up there and directly south of Parcel B. The first thing I'd like to ask is, I wonder how the people, how the order of speaking was determined, since I signed up yesterday at about 6:00, before the superintendent of schools, or the president of the board, or anybody else got here, and yet they spoke first, second, third, fourth in that order. But that's beside the point. I just, we need to have an explanation as to how that was done. Also, I noticed that most of the speakers that spoke yesterday were in favor of the Yesterday, Counselor Smith asked about view corridors, and were they a priority? They're not a priority to City Westminster. They took part of the view corridor over there by putting in huge water tanks, 40 feet tall, and a pump house that's near that tall also. They didn't care about the view corridor then, they don't care about the view corridor now. I asked you to vote against increasing the density on Parcel B, and the reason is this: 3.5 is going to impair the view corridor from Lowell across to the mountains. Five will destroy it. When you start building houses on the side of that hill, no matter whether it's one or 50, or the 40 extra that they're asking you to let them put over there, you're going to block the view corridor from there. I ask you to do one thing. Before this project is finally voted on, I want you to go over there on a summer evening, sit in your car, and watch the sunset over the mountains out across that view corridor. It's one of the most beautiful places in the state of Colorado. The only view that compares to it is from my front porch, looking southbound, and south towards the mountains down there. So I ask you to vote against this increase in the density, and that's my reason, because you're going to destroy the corridor rather than just impair it. Thank you.
Kurt Allstott.
Mayor and City Council, Kurt Allstott, I actually farm the property that we are discussing here. I have personally started farming it when I was seven, and I too don't want to see the view go or a change, but it's, we've been selling property for decades, for five decades at the church, and it's a change of season for the church. It's no longer a profitable thing to have a farm that's 200 acres in the middle of Westminster. And anyway, a couple of little history things I'd like to just let you know here, and remember it's change of season, because that's important. The churches, in the late '60s, the church had a dairy farm at 92nd and Pecos, a lot of trailers there now, and the farm grew some of the crops for our dairy cows. As we still have one of the barns, and if you drive on Lowell Boulevard at Bradburn, Lowell swings out around one of our old milk barns that was there, it still is there, and what is now Shaw Heights used to be a lake down in the bottom, and we used to let the cows go down there and would water the cows down there and then bring them back. But it became a challenging situation as other farmers and land started selling, being developed, and we're talking at the end of the '70s. And it soon became impossible to have a dairy farm within town, and so that property was sold and developed. After that, the crops off the farm were sold for our ministries, whether it's the schools, the church, or our radio stations, et cetera. In my lifetime, the church has sold property for the good of the community, so we're thinking five decades now, and I'll give you some examples. Random High School is on our property. Gregory Hill Elementary, it's a new name now, that's on our property. Crown Point Academy, I realize that's recent, that's on our property, including our own school. We've got our own, so we've got four schools right now on our quarter sections there. St. Anthony's North Hospital, I don't know if everybody knew, we had that at a 99-year lease, and that was one of the things that we did for the community, was a hospital. One Hydrapillar water tank that's overpass the hospital, and two new ground tanks, which Charlie mentioned, City Westminster just replaced and purchased a piece of property from us, just to the 82nd and Lowell area. The church has had the opportunity to sell before. The church has been selling property again for over five decades and has shrunk in size that has made a difference, a difficult for some years to make a profit. Manpower is sometimes an issue.
Kurt Allstott, you're ending your time, sir.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Ray.
My name is Karen Ray. I live in Shaw Heights. I'm a homeowner of about 11 years. I work for one of the big companies that get put up on the screens as a senior analyst in IT, and I'm speaking against the requested amendments on the land use plan, Parcels B and D. I'd like to address Point Two. I live in a neighborhood that's made up of small houses. The averages are 900 to 2,000 square feet, and they are sitting on lots of 7,000 or more square feet. This is a community that's zoned at 3.5, and these are not executive houses. These were homes that were built in the mid-century period for working-class families, and that is who makes up this neighborhood today, middle-class, working-class families. A small home does not mean or require a small lot, as has been described by the developers, and the proposal to increase the lot, to increase the density of the housing development on Lots B and then to develop an R8 or zone on the Lot D, on the D Lot, are really excessive, I believe. What one of the previous speakers just talked about in terms of the view corridor and the effect that that is going to have in terms of one of the most iconic places, it really is, not just for citizens of Westminster, but for the entire Front Range. The neighborhood where I live, Shaw Heights, is a very middle neighborhood from all the statistics. It's middle income, its housing costs are middle range. The neighborhood is middle in terms of age, it's actually a little younger than the median here in Westminster. The neighborhood does not have an issue with a transition in that area that's called Lot B from the apartment complex of Mountain View Terrace between the large houses on Observation Hill to Shaw Heights, that the argument that this is needed for a transition between those two densities of housing, that apartment complex has always been part of the Shaw Heights community since it was built back in the late '70s. The proposal, I find, would be a negative and detrimental change.
Ms. Ray.
Yes, sir.
That's the end of your time.
Okay. Just, I would just ask the council to think hard about what this means in terms of the existing communities.
Ms. Ray, that is the end of your time.
Okay, thank you.
Richard Stewart, J.B. Chavez, and Dawn Fittis.
My name is Rich Stewart. I'm a retired school teacher. I was also a locomotive engineer at one time, which is how I became a school teacher. I was injured. I'm concerned about the proposed farm development and what it will mean to the students of Westminster on that farm. Flynn Elementary, 467, Mesa Elementary, 368, Shaw Heights Middle School, 566, Sunset Mesa Elementary, 371, Crown Point Charter Academy School, 476, Bellevue Christian School, 324. There's 2,572 students contiguous to the farm. This doesn't include the high school, and those high school drivers, which I know very well from being a high school teacher, will be coming up, roaring up, and are running up, roaring up the streets adjacent to the farm. These are just the schools that are adjacent to the farm. There's others that are close in Westminster schools. There's also daycare centers and others nearby. I'm especially concerned about the schoolchildren, the parents, and the staff leaving this school. I watch them come and go, and as you probably know, middle school students aren't necessarily, it's necessarily the most focused group of human beings that you'll be working with. And neither are the dozens of cars with parents, anxious parents looking for their kids, driving around mostly on Lowell and Shaw Boulevard where I live. It should be renamed Shaw Drag Strip, but that's another question that I intend to bring to the traffic department and the police department. I watch these kids come every day, and it's a dangerous combination, as it is now. It's frightening. I watch the kids come and go, the parents coming and go, and I cannot imagine what life there will be for the teachers, the school, the students, the little kids, elementary schools, middle schools surrounding the farm, if it's filled with thousands and thousands of people. I'm not exaggerating in the numbers, you know the numbers, that will be dangerous for the students. And I really think it's, it may be a life and death issue for
Mr. Stewart, that's your time, sir.
And the community. So I ask that we reject the proposal. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is J.B. Chavez. As you can see, I don't have notes, so I'm just going to speak to you as my heart. I am in favor of this. I heard someone yesterday saying, one of the councilors says, "Why should we do this? Why should we leave, vacate, not do anything?" I can give you examples. I want to give you my opinion as a father, homeowner, and as a business owner. This place, I live right in front of it. My house is always infested with rats. And this summer, if you don't see rats, see, only the people that actually live in front of it, they can actually know what I'm talking about. A lot of people, they live across the street or three, four blocks on the other side. My house is always infested with rats. On the summer, wild animals. There's always wild animals. I got kids, I got dogs. See, for me, a development in front of my house, it will be perfect. As a homeowner, my house, it will get equity, not only my house, my neighbor, my other neighbor. See, I think economy and community is one of the first things. Business owner, I would love to get involved in this. There's nothing better to get out of my house and see the place where I work. I travel two, three hours a day, and it's always traffic. People tell you, "Oh, traffic, traffic, traffic." Yes, it's always traffic. Denver is infested with traffic. We already know this. But we have to think about the future. Not only, they say traffic, okay, we're going to have traffic, we're going to have more cops, there's going to be more protection, we're going to have cars, we're going to have more cops, tickets. The city is going to make money. I will make money in equity, and I'm not the only one. The owner of the farm, they have the right to sell. They have the right to have a future. They've been doing this for over 100 years. Why is not going to be allowed to do it? They probably have plans. The farm is not a good business. They can do something else. I respect their decision to sell. I respect them, Phil Marcus, because they wanted to bring a community, more people living in here. Thank you.
Ms. Fittis.
Brian Dias, Dias and C.C. Glider, Pat Byrd. I think Mr. Dias has already testified last night.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I suspect that my badge might give my position away, but for the record, let me say that I am not, I repeat, not in favor of the uplands development as presented. It is not that I am anti-development or anti-developer. I've been very supportive of the downtown and the five focus areas as defined by the comprehensive plan. I have been equally vocal to go slow on the nine opportunity areas, which according to the latest edition of the city edition, are now character areas, and I quote, "Nine clusters of land with vacant sites or development potential have been presented for testing land use concepts. Uplands as presented does not appear to be a test of a new land use concept." You got your visual last night, Country Club Village, the connections, Tuscany Trails, no new land concepts there. This unique property, not only for Westminster but for the Front Range deserves better. It's the historic epicenter of Westminster from which the city got its name. For many of us, it is to Westminster what the Flatirons are to Boulder. Others here this evening will make clear the significance of the land more eloquently than myself. Others will challenge how uplands does not dovetail with the comprehensive plan. What I find most curious and concerning is that only three out of the five parcels that make up uplands are under consideration. I fear someone has called an audible. This play is designed to establish a precedent. We all know case law is established by the outcome of formal cases, or former cases, sorry. If you approve the proposal, it will transfer future decisions onto Parcel A, the crown jewel of the farm. It will become a form of de facto law. Now, once at any of the neighborhood outreach meetings, or even last night, as individual, was uplands presented as individual or singular propositions. It's always been a total package, five out of five. I'm not sure if anything less makes economic sense for the developer. I sincerely believe this proposal as is, is not in the best interest of the citizens of Westminster. It is certainly not improving or protecting the natural environment of Westminster. So I urge you to vote no until such time that an acceptable resolution of all plots can be satisfied. It is my greatest hope that you clearly understand the choices you're charged with. Let's be smart about this. Let's be strategic. Let's be creative. Let's be wise. We can do better. We have to do better. Thank you.
Ms. Glider.
My name is Carolyn Glider. I've lived in the Shaw Heights neighborhood for 50 years. I've seen a lot of changes. When I was, when I first moved to Shaw Heights, there was nothing beyond Sheridan, so there's been a lot of development. Along the Front Range and the metro area, people, our residents, are railing against unmitigated development. People in various communities around us, Arvada, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, are all raging against this kind of a development, but progress is progress, I guess. What I am asking is that you oppose the amendments. I agree with the previous speaker about separating this into the three parcels from the main jewel, as he called it, because I think it gives a sort of an approval that they will use to go ahead and then apply those same things to the larger issue. These parcels have significance of their own, particularly the viewpoints. The comment that they are within five minutes of a transit And I quote, "Nine clusters of land with vacant sites or development potential have been presented for testing land use concepts. Uplands as presented does not appear to be a test of a new land use concept." You got your visual last night. Country Club Village, the connections, Tuscany Trails, no new land concepts there. This unique property, not only for Westminster, but for the Front Range deserves better. It's the historic epicenter of Westminster from which the city got its name. For many of us, it is the Westminster, it is to Westminster what the Flatirons are to Boulder. Others here this evening will make clear the significance of the land more eloquently than myself. Others will challenge how uplands does not dovetail with the comprehensive plan. What I find most curious and concerning is that only three out of the five parcels that make up uplands are under consideration. I fear someone has called an audible. This play is designed to establish a precedent. We all know case law is established by the outcome of formal cases, or former cases, sorry. If you approve the proposal, it will transfer future decisions onto parcel A, the crown jewel of the farm. It will become a form of de facto law. Now, once at any of the neighborhood outreach meetings or even last night, as individual, was uplands presented as individual or singular propositions. It's always been a total package, five out of five. I'm not sure if anything less makes economic sense for the developer. I sincerely believe this proposal as is, is not in the best interest of the citizens of Westminster. It is certainly not improving or protecting the natural environment of Westminster. So I urge you to vote no until such time that an acceptable resolution of all plots can be satisfied. It is my greatest hope that you clearly understand the choices you are charged with. Let's be smart about this. Let's be strategic. Let's be creative. Let's be wise. We can do better. We have to do better. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Glider. I've lived in the Shaw Heights neighborhood for 50 years. I've seen a lot of changes. When I was, when I first moved to Shaw Heights, there was nothing beyond Sheridan. So there's been a lot of development. Along the Front Range and the metro area, people, our residents, are railing against unmitigated development. People in various communities around us, Arvada, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, are all raging against this kind of a development. But progress is progress, I guess. What I am asking is that you oppose the amendments. I agree with the previous speaker about separating this into the three parcels from the main jewel, as he, as he called it, because I think it gives a sort of an approval that they will use to go ahead and then apply those same things to the larger issue. These parcels have, have significance of their own, particularly the viewpoints. The comment that they are within five minutes of a transit station, that's only if you get in your car and hopefully the traffic isn't that bad, or if you're calling the bus stop at 84th and Federal a transit center, or the one, the bus stop at 36th and 80th Avenue a transit center, then this is not within walking distance or five minutes of a transit center. I'm asking you not to approve the proposal for D and B because you have so many projects underway right now, big development projects. You just approved a study of the federal corridor. That will impact what happens with all of this area, too. There's no haste necessary. They've already admitted that if it's not, if it's not approved, they'll go back and think of something else. Let's look at the something else. Looking at a 100-year-old plat and deciding that that's the governing idea and ignoring the fact that the comprehensive plan accepted the zoning as it is now, don't change the character of our neighborhoods. I know that I'm supposed to make a real rational appeal. I'm making appeal for the character of the neighborhood that I live in, the neighborhood where we send our children to school, where we're afraid because of the traffic, where we worry. It was once a lake, there are times when it's become a lake again with the drainage issues. Both of these plots of lands are on deep slopes and drainage is an issue. I think there's more information and it needs to be garnered. There's no rush necessarily to approve this. Give time for your review of the comprehensive plan. When you say it's in general compliance, if you tell me I can have a pet animal in my backyard, that could be-
Mr. Glider, I'm sorry, that's your time.
Okay. Could be a hamster or an alligator. Thank you.
Larry Prado? Joshua Katz?
My name's Larry Prado. I live at 9925 King Court. As an active voter and taxpayer, I strongly urge you to oppose the rezoning and development of all the parcels of land known as the upland development. This amendment does not serve Westminster public or community interest. It serves a completely private purpose. Consider the following. Adding 2,350 units will add between 2,350 and 4,700 more cars to already congested city streets, including Federal and Sheridan and all the east-west streets. The plans for traffic and water are too vague, especially with water. We don't want to end up like Thornton that has mandatory water restrictions. We kind of forget about Westminster's on a hill, kind of far from a river basin. The plan mentions a substantially changed conditions. There really aren't any substantially changed conditions that I can tell, and if so, what are they besides congested roads and bad air? The plan says there will be minimal environmental impacts if you develop any or all of these parcels. What will happen to the native birds, including robins, sparrows, owls? We have hawks here, too, and they're food sources. We, what will happen to even the foxes? The plan does not address our increasingly poor air quality or open space and ignores the fact that open fields, native plants, crops, farms reduce greenhouse gases. During the developer's presentation at the planning commission meeting, the developer's engineers said that the impact on the traffic would be minimal. Well, I hope that you saw the tape or maybe you were present during that meeting, but there was a lot of laughter and gasp during that meeting that we had to make the audience quiet. People don't believe it. Several developers talk about the missing middle. This is a PR-based existential threat, literally a threat to our existence. It's supposed to make us feel like something is missing, or when there's nothing missing, or there's something, we don't know what, will go wrong if not addressed. This is fear-based fog. Developer claimed unnamed employers told them they wanted a larger pool of more educated, younger and more educated people for their workforce. 7-Eleven, Sun Microsystems? You really could, you could go to any company in any city in any state and their employer would tell you exactly the same thing. The developer promised unspecified bike trails and public transportation access, but seriously, who's going to ride their bike or take the bus to the store to go get diapers or to go do a week's worth of grocery shopping? People have, if people have, people will drive. The developer also mentioned Washington Park, and I used to live there. Washington Park is not high-density development with their plans of rows and rows of townhomes, including the walkability hyperbolic. This is really a completely bogus comparison. So the question is for you, ladies and gentlemen, is how will you, how will you be remembered in history with your vote? When you look in the eyes of your children, your voters, your grandchildren, will you tell them that you paved it or that you saved it? Vote no on this. Don't, don't pave it, save it. Thank you.
Mr. Katz? Ms. Crump, you're up ahead for that.
Hello. My name is Joshua Katz, and I am here to speak in support of the comprehensive plan amendment of parcel D specifically. I'm the owner of the Summit Square Shopping Center, which is a 12-acre retail center across the street from parcel D on 84th and Federal. In general, I think that this will fit the surrounding area, and it will create a nice transition between the apartments and our center and the, the new uplands development. I think it helps to create a diverse housing mix within the project, and it helps the missing middle. You know, I wrote in a letter in support of the amendment also, and I was ranting, kind of. It was very long, so I'll keep these comments short. Just in summary, I think that the planning staff recommendation is appropriate, in particular for parcel D, and I support the amendment of the comprehensive plan for all parcels.
I'm Linda Crump. I've lived off of 77th and Osceola for 23 years. I listened to the city council's study session from November 18th, 2019, in which Max Kirschbaum stated that we have enough water for today's needs, but that we have a water supply gap at future build-out with a 2,000 acre feet shortfall, which is 652 million gallons of water. It seems future build-out is coming quickly. There are probably many development projects happening, sorry, I'm nervous, that I'm unaware of, but the recent ones I found out about are all just below 92nd. You have Alto with 70 units, Eaton Street with 118 units, Ascent has 255 units and 700 more on the way, Terrace Gardens, 70 units, and now considering uplands with the planned, but possibly more than 2,350 units. Uplands alone has a projected need of 778 acre feet of water. Number eight on your city land use changes states that proposed amendments will not negatively impact other things like water supply, among other things, like water supply. It seems our city planners and city councils should not risk the sustainability of our water supply for existing businesses and current residents by overbuilding. In that same study session, some remedies were mentioned to improve our water supply. One was those, one of those was purchasing more water rights, which was followed by a discussion that pointed out there are basically no water rights to be had. There was mention of new reservoirs and fixing infrastructure to make the water use go further, but the major agreement was simply conservation. No one wants to waste water. The citizens here have already cut back on water usage. And now that we've had a big rate hike, many people are graveling over their lawns or just letting them burn up. Not all of us can afford to go out and redo everything with nice new ziriscaping. I feel that our established communities should be able to continue to have homes with a garden or a flower bed or a little bit of lawn. As your constituents, we suggest you protect our water supply by not overbuilding. Not everyone that moves to Colorado needs to be housed in Westminster. Please leave us some sorely needed space and some resources. Thank you.
Yeah. Dee Carter, Eric Wykoff, Jay Lou.
Eric Wykoff.
Go ahead.
I'm addressing number six, the proposed amendment. It says, "But not including a need for affordable housing." These houses are going to be at least starting $350,000. I don't know any millennials that can make that house payment. And the need for sidewalks around there. Our sidewalks are fine. They're smaller because when the houses were built in the 60s, people weren't as fat. Now, you guys want to build sidewalks around here, and they'll be wider because people don't go outside. Millennials, they don't even want to make a bowl of cereal in the morning, you know, because it's a bowl, milk and the cereal. They'd rather eat a cereal bar. And number eight of the proposed amendment said it will not negatively affect the transportation system. If you go over on Lowell at 5:30 in the evening, on 84th and Lowell, you can see headlights, nothing but headlights coming over that hill. And if you put more houses in there, it's only going to get worse. And, you know, if you can't see that, you're blind. And this, and if, I, I'm on a limited income, being a disabled veteran, like many other people on limited incomes, I can't afford an annex tax, and I'm sure it will be high. Someone's already addressed the bus stops. No one's going to walk. Two, it's 2.2 miles from 88th and Hunter to the Sheridan and 36th pickup. Nobody's going to walk 2.2 miles. And so I just want to say I'm opposed to this, and I think you can find something better to put, you know, besides these homes, besides this monstrosity of buildings. Thank you.
Mr. Lou? Excuse me, Mr. Lou?
Yeah, they're hearing the packets in front of us.
Could you open it, please? Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Do you have it open, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm waiting to listen to you.
Right, but I was about to present that, but you guys don't allow people to present the slides.
Go ahead and proceed. You're on your time.
Thank you. Good evening again, Councilor Mayor. Confucius once said, "First-time strangers, second-time buddies." Now, as an old friend of yours, I ask you to deny this atrocious amendment application right here, right tonight. One of my many reasons is that the developer is incompetent for the project. They are so incompetent that they have to pull out a cottage town plan from 100 years ago to justify the uplands' pathetic future existence and high-density design. And to pile on, from last night, they started to call it a historical fact. What a joke! Fact of what? That cottage town plan was such a failure that it's never come to fruition in the past 100 years. If the developer can call a pipe dream from 100 years ago a fact, no wonder they can call the homes they are going to build attainable. No wonder they can, they think there'll be no impact on traffic and water. Ladies and gentlemen, it's all in their head. They are so out of touch and incompetent and eating corn chips in cornfields that I don't think this developer is even able to dig up a hole for their, for itself to hide its head. The uplands project is going to destroy Westminster's past, future, history, and identity. To provide some historical context, it is going to destroy 20% of the original 1911 Incorporated Westminster. This actually is a historical fact. Another historical fact, the land has been a farm for the past 100 years. This farmland and the castle have made Westminster Westminster. Let me repeat, the uplands project is going to mess up Westminster's history and identity. Have you heard the viral sound mounted residence? "Upland, up your land, up my land, no uplands." Yeah, Mayor gets it. On slide three of my handout, you can see there are 12 words in Westminster's 83-word vision statement that are actually against the development, and only one phrase for it, which is the phrase "tax base." Mr. Mayor, as an old friend of yours now, I know very well that you are a sales tax guy. In July 2017, when you kicked off your reelection campaign at the city park, only one minute into your speech, you already mentioned that you are dependent on sales tax. Yeah, stay thirsty, my friend. However, destroying a 100-year-old farm in order to expand the tax base is just like giving up your family name, Ashison, and changing it to Ajisan and trying very hard to fit into the Japanese community. It's not that Westminster's Japanese community doesn't want you to be their child, but it's because they don't want you to give up your own heritage that easily. Okay, let me read out loud the city's vision statement and allow me to knock on the podium to highlight every word that is against uplands, since you don't allow the people to show their slides using the city's projector. I will show you that uplands violates the very first-
Mr. Lou, that is the end of your time, sir. Donna Workheiser, Workhauser, Jim Travis, and Deb Rickenberger. Donna here?
I'm here.
I got your name on one, somebody filled out, so they just wanted to have you talk. Would you still like to talk, or you want to pass?
Yeah. Well, I sent you all a letter today about my experiences with having come and go behind my house. I don't know who wrote it, read it. Of all the different things that I've gone through trying to get answers, things that I've seen that have gone wrong, and this is a small project. This is on the corner, and you're talking, I mean, who's going to be responsible for watching this? I mean, if, like I said, if you go by Drive Down Federal, number four on the plans list that it's supposed to be great is Federal. Tell me, anybody that doesn't look or go up into that parking lot, how did that happen? I have a list of questions there, and I'm hoping somebody gets back with me on this. Because I've watched this, I've, you know, I've been threatened by three different people on this project because I've spoke up, and I just don't understand how this all happened. I've lived there 25 years, and this is disgraceful. So I'm hoping that this does not go through, and, yeah, I'm hoping somebody looks at this project and can answer the questions I asked.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Deb Rickenberger, and I have lived in the city of Westminster for over 30 years. I live across the street, directly across the street from parcel A, and for the record, I have never seen a rat. I am here today to speak for myself and why I believe the city council should vote against the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. First, I'd like to find, I find that the public is at a disadvantage when speaking to the city council about the proposed comprehensive amendments. The applicant was allowed to present a full overview of the upland development. Their presentation even showed many images of places that are not even within the city. It's very, very misleading and almost feels very propaganda-ish, if that's a word. The public has been instructed many times to keep their comments, their public comments to the proposed comprehensive plan amendments for only the three parcels. Kind of seems like it's a form of censorship on our side. I'm a firm believer in progress- I'm a firm believer in progress. I consider myself forward-thinking. I believe that the city should focus on completing the new downtown Westminster and the Westminster train station. Completing these projects would be a true measure of the city's economic and housing vision. The Westminster Forward boasts "one community, one vision, one future." How does upland fit into the "one community"? When many of the nearby residents are opposed and extremely concerned about all the potential negative impacts of this development, the increased traffic, pollution, noise, crime, no water, lack of water, sewer infrastructure, it goes on and on. What about the traffic? I live on Lowell 24/7, 365 days a year. The city staff and the applicant might think that they know what traffic will become, but I beg to differ. The current traffic is absolutely crazy most evenings. The potential of adding more people to such a small area would make traffic intolerable. I ask you, why does the applicant want to change the comprehensive plan? All I hear is that it's the city's vision. Is there an underlying issue with profitability of the existing comprehensive plan? Why office to high-density housing? Is there a surplus of office space in the city, or is it, and it's not profitable to build more? Is it "take the good with the bad"? Is it "all or nothing" for this plan? Will the applicant wait, do the bait and switch, bail out, and leave the city to clean up a mess if there's an economic downturn? I strongly urge the city council to listen to the people who already live here and vote against the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Grover Sardaro, Carl Marunia, and Bruce Baker. Is Grover here? Carl?
I've got a lot to go over, so three minutes is a very short time.
Yep. Well, wait.
And once you get it, it helps to kind of break it in half. There's two pages of kind of the facts and material go over, and then there's some exhibits on the other half. Okay, thank you, I appreciate your patience. So, good evening, I appreciate the fact that you gave me the time to be in front of you. I'm going to have three comments against the amendments, and I'm going to focus on water, traffic, and schools. Be careful of a lot of unqualified statements. "Oh, it's going to make less traffic, I believe this."
Oh, use the mic, please.
"I believe that." Really, these are going to be facts that I'm going to lay out before you that are qualified statements. Okay, and that pertains to the amendments, I put the pertains to right there. I won't go over it because of time. So, I looked on the Westminster website, and this is on the Westminster site. So there's a lot of trouble with water litigation over the last 50, 60 years, including protests, building moratoriums because of the water problems. So in '63, we had to buy 12,000 acre feet, so on and so forth. So I'll let you read through those. But we've had to partner with Thornton, other area cities to solve these problems. So we have an already precarious water situation in a climate change environment. So how, where's the water going to come from? How many acre feet? Are we working with these other partners? So if you look at the pictures of the developments on three and four, that's what we're proposing to go to. And so I did some quick comparables, like real estate comparables. So in the area, lot sizes range from 700 square feet on up to 100, or I'm sorry, 1,100 to 1,200. Price ranges in the comparables are 365 to 530K right now. Not talking about in that beautiful area or in other areas of Westminster, so keep that in mind. What's the drainage plan? Keep in mind, on the pages, you see the different houses. Now, if you look, you see green space around them. That's not going to be the case. If you approve this amendment, there is no minimum lot size. They are going to pack these, so this water's going to run off. So also thinking about sewage, have to think about the infrastructure, traffic. So 2,300s on the full build-out, if you were to do this, is equal to like a First Bank Center. Every day, every night, leaving that area. So we're going to add a First Bank Center, that's what we're looking at. So to say that, "Oh, that's not going to impact traffic," actually, traffic will go down. That's not the case, it's an unqualified statement. So what are the plans to improve the infrastructure? I know that's PUD and down the road, but we need to think about that right now before the amendment comes up. Impact on Westminster schools, this is important to me. I have children in the district. 9,000 students, they don't rank very high. So this is a district that's under stress. So we're going to, I heard the developer say, "We're going to help them by giving them more students." If you look at the last page of the exhibits, we have students right FM Day, right by the development that I showed you, that are in huts. So we're going to add more students to this, but as long as they get money, right?
Mr. Marunia, that's the end of your time, sir.
You got to think, everybody that wants this have customers or have financial interests, whether it's the school district, church-
Mr. Marunia, that is the end of your time, sir.
Thank you, sir, sorry about that. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Hi there, my name is Bruce Baker. I've come to talk about the changes to the comprehensive plan. We have a comprehensive plan. To change it, there must be a profound benefit to the public. Not some whimsy of the owner, but a profound benefit to the public. There's none here. Let me use a metaphor. The comprehensive plan is like a human being. It was designed, it was, every part was thought about. And now you want to say, on Parcel A, the left hand, we're going to add two fingers. We're going to make more density, because fingers are good. It's just going to crowd it up. It's going to make it unusable. When you add more density to that awkward piece of land, how is the traffic going to get onto Lowell? It's going to have to swing around. Lowell is one of the three major north-souths through. That's just going to crowd it up. You don't need to add a lot of density to get congestion. The 3.5 is a good plan for that. Now let's go to Parcel D. It's like my left foot, and you're going to cut off my big toe. Big toes are really important for your feet. Right now, that's an office building. That's the way the comprehensive plan works. Each part of the plan helps the other parts. When the designers of this plan made those designations, they said, "We need office buildings there." And it's a great site for office building. It fronts on 84th. Now you want to put apartments there, so they're going to hear the road noise all day long? That's stupid. Plus also, look to the benefit of the school district. If there's office buildings there, the school district gets lots of property tax money, and they have to educate, let me see, zero students. And now you're going to take that money away from them and make them educate a few students. That hurts them. Changes to the, the comprehensive plan is a promise to the people who live in this city about how the land's going to be used. People make decisions based on those. They invest their dreams, and they invest their money. And now you want to change that and betray them. It should only be done if there's a valid public benefit, which I say there is not, to B and D. And it shouldn't hurt, and I think this is going to hurt. Let's go back to B, you know, the hand with seven fingers. Okay? When we add more houses and hardscape to that, what's it going to do when it rains? There'll be far more runoff. 3.5 is a good number, office buildings on D is a good number. Please stay with that, thank you.
Stephen Flint, Chris Mahoney, Willow Papa George. Which one are you, sir? Okay.
I live at 7461 Elliott, behind the come-and-go, that the building department cannot seem to manage the construction. Who knows what they'll do with this big uplands? But I bought my first house in Westminster in 1974. I've owned it ever since. I don't live there, I live up the street. And my big concern is traffic and water. And I have a question. When the city of Westminster enlarged Stanley Reservoir by increasing the capacity by the dam, did the dam ever, the water in the dam ever reach to the level of the existing dam? Nobody seems to be able to answer that one. I've asked a couple of times, but nobody knows. Traffic, Federal is two lanes each way. You can't enlarge it unless you're going to get rid of, let's see, what did the gentleman say? The pot shops, the liquor stores, the, I don't remember, all the little businesses that are there. Lowell is two, one direction each way. You're going to get rid of the houses? You can't enlarge the infrastructure to supply or to get the cars in and out of that development. I am against it, thank you.
Chris Mahoney? Willow Papa George?
I apologize, I'm not feeling well, and I'm nervous, so, good evening. Hi, my name's Willow Papa George, and I'm a homeowner on Lowell, directly across from Parcel A. I'm also a voter here in Westminster. I cherish my home, and I love my neighborhood. I'm truly blessed to live where I do, so I'm here tonight to do my best to protect our lovely community. Most of us who live in the area work full-time jobs. We don't have expertise in city code or land use laws, but we do understand how these proposed changes will impact us and our surroundings. We are the ones whose lives will be most affected by this development, and we are your constituents. And I thank you for representing us. I understand we're only supposed to consider the zone changes to Parcells B, D, and E tonight, but it's impossible to remove these parcels from the whole development application. These changes might seem insignificant when looked at in a vacuum, but they are substantial zoning changes that should not be made easily. I know you have guidelines to follow when making your decision, but you're also human and have common sense, so I'm sure you see how enormous the impact of these changes would be in reality. In real life, these changes would make Lowell a major thoroughfare that will forever destroy the calm and quiet neighborhood that we now enjoy. The Pillar Fire farmland is special, and it should be considered the crown jewel of Westminster. Instead, it's being discussed as an unimportant commodity. But come on, you could be spending your time thinking about how to capitalize on this rare land. There are endless better uses for this pristine and picturesque land than this development. Think about how exciting it would be to consider other uses. An educational farm to expand on the historic use of the land while teaching future generations about the importance of food production? Isn't an agri-community or agri-hood so much more exciting than another high or medium-dense mixed-use development that it's too expensive for any of us to afford? Wouldn't you rather be debating the possibilities of a truly new and original neighborhood that would get international recognition while leading the way of the future? You have the makings of a truly amazing and trailblazing kind of development available to you today. What other cities have that possibility? Not many. With some guts and some forward-thinking, this part of Westminster could become the envy of the nation. We all want Westminster to be a beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city. With some forward-thinking, this land could become an innovative prototype. These zoning changes for this development are not right for this part of Westminster. It's much too dense and not creative enough for this iconic land. I beg you all to represent our needs by protecting our neighborhood and Westminster's history by denying these changes. Thank you.
Art Jacobson, Mike Jorgensen, Laura Lang. Is Art Jacobson here? Mike Jorgensen?
Hi. I'm Mike Jorgensen, I live across from Parcel A at 84th and Lowell. My neighbors and I all love living in this neighborhood, and we agree that it is critical that we keep it intact. This development is incongruous to the neighborhood, and it is not what we residents signed up for when moving here. Now naturally, the owners of the farm are within their rights by wishing to sell the farm, but the results must be within reason, and this council should recognize the negative impact of this proposal. Our infrastructure is not meant to withstand such an overwhelming burden. And finally, I just wanted to mention that everyone who I've heard speak in favor of this development consistently did so out of a financial interest in the project, but not with respect to the existing residents who are invested in this neighborhood every day. Thank you very much.
Ms. Lang? Next up will be Elena Dear, John Palmer, and Larry Valenti.
Just to set the record straight, my last name is Noakes Lang. Two words, no hyphen, and always confuses.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see the hyphen.
And, excuse me, did the city clerk deliver to you three photographs and a site map? Oh, good, okay. Good, yeah. You'll probably get sick of looking at that map with all this going on. But anyway, Mr. Mayor and councilors, my name is Laura Noakes Lang. I've lived at 8150 Le Place Court for 52 years. The focus of my presentation is part of Parcel B, south of Bradburn Drive. The city clerk has distributed those maps for you. David Kosky was the amateur photographer who took the pictures. The property is only 12.582 acres, or approximately 5% of the overall proposed upland development. This iconic and irreplaceable land must be preserved for posterity as open space. Looking at a flat map does not show the incredible elevations of the property. I understand that the top of the hill is the highest point in Adams County. Because I live on top of the hill, I am exquisitely aware of the destruction of panoramic views when development takes place. Even low buildings block views from pedestrians and cars. Over time, additions to buildings are added, landscaping and trees mature, and in less than 40 years, you still have a nice property, but the views are gone. A large part of the property is designated as 15% grade and really unsuitable for development. The top part of Parcel B offers magnificent views to the northwest, west, and southeast of Denver. Once houses are built there, the views will be blocked from the public forever. During the water tank construction, I understood the top of the hill would be graded, so if there were a failure of tanks or pumps, all water would flow to the north, where there were no houses. This was to reassure the homeowners on the south side of the hill who experienced a pump failure several years ago. Millions of gallons of water rushed through their yards and into their basements. Now we are told there is a retention pond on the north side of the tanks to handle the water from any failures. I don't know why, but I lack confidence the little tiny retention pond will be adequate. Any homes built in Parcel B would be at risk. What would be the liability of the city in a worst-case scenario? Will the developer be required to disclose this information to homebuyers in Parcel B? There are apartment buildings at 84th and Lowell Boulevard. This is a nice, there is a nice playground centrally located for the children. I have observed that the playground is used by young children. The older kids head straight for the cornfield next door to play hard, use their imaginations and inventiveness, and have some totally free and disorganized fun. I believe kids need open spaces, preferably close to home. The uplands developer will be required to dedicate 70 to 80 acres of land to public land use. Why not let the south part of Parcel B be part of that dedication for open space? It wouldn't cost the city anything to buy. The Westminster Comprehensive Plan 2013 states- The Westminster Comprehensive Plan 2013 states, scenic, quote, "Scenic vistas are a key element of Westminster's identity, whether to expansive open space areas within the city or to the mountains beyond. The city's varied topography provides breathtaking panoramic views to the Rocky Mountain French Range and downtown Denver," end quote. This site provides both.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
That's okay. It was just candy from there.
Ms. Dare.
Hello, my name is Elena Dare, and I live near 88th and Federal, and I am opposed to the proposed comp plan amendments of changing the land use designations for parcels B and D. I will be focusing on standard six of the 10 criteria the council considers when reviewing an amendment to the land use plan. To summarize this particular criteria, the proposed amendment furthers an important public policy, such as a need for affordable housing, protection of historic resources, preservation of open space, or reduction in water demand. Regarding affordable housing, within the agenda presented by Westminster staff, it is stated that change in density does not specifically require that these units be designated as affordable or require any specific unit type. It is my opinion that approving the increase in higher-density housing for parcels B and D with the assumption that they will provide affordable housing without requiring this to be the case creates a moot point and is therefore irrelevant. This is particularly the case since the uplands proposal does not mention the intention of offering affordable housing within any of its new units. Regarding protection of historic resources and preservation of open space, while these particular parcels do not specifically carry either of those designations, they surround the nearby historical landmark of the Westminster Castle and a working farm that has just celebrated its 100-year anniversary. It is clear that the focus of this criteria is to protect and preserve untouched land, the opposite of what would be accomplished if these changes are approved. And third, regarding the reduction of water demand, although there seems to be debate about the effect of these proposed changes on the water usage, we can all agree that they certainly would not result in a reduction of water demand. Finally, I would like to make the point that although the requested increase in housing density for parcel B from 3.5 to 5 and parcel D from office to 8 may somehow appear to not be significant on paper, the literal, physical reality is that currently these parcels are undeveloped. Uplands developers themselves have discussed how the current designations of these parcels are not ideal for people such as themselves looking to build, so if these changes are approved tonight, you are effectively making the change from zero units per acre to five and zero units per acre to eight. Please consider the impact associated with these changes on the current residents of the community. Uplands developers have pointed to the Westminster Forward summary as reason to believe their proposal is desired. However, that summary consisted of less than 3,500 responses, while a current petition on change.org against their proposal has over 6,000 online and in-person signatures. Please hear our community and hear us when we say that these are changes we do not want. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer.
Good evening. I also live, excuse me, across from parcel A, and I'd also like to state, we don't have rats, just as a point of fact. A couple of things I'd like to point out or discuss. B and D is number eight. The traffic, there is going to be a traffic impact. If not, why did the city just approve $600,000 last night to do a traffic impact study on Federal? The numbers are skewed that we're working with because they are reflective from the 2013 comp plan numbers, which are not reflective of the influx of people or traffic that we've had that have been unaccounted for. Same goes for the water. The numbers that we're working with are the 2013 numbers from the comp plan. They don't reflect what's happening now. In a council meeting, excuse me, a study session you folks had back in November, this was fully discussed about lack of water at build-out. I think that's already been covered. The drainage and sewer, those issues, there's a clause or some wording in the OREED package where they will assist the city. I'd like to know what assist the city means. Are they paying for it, or are the taxpayers left to pick up the tab? Let's move on to item 10 or section 10, the ecosystem, the wildlife in the area. We do have eagles. They have been photographed. Granted, it might not be a nest on the farm, but it is a hunting ground. Same with the coyotes, the foxes, the geese. It's all part of the ecosystem, which is very fragile, and we need to help protect. Even your first, excuse me, even the governor's first husband recently came out and spoke about animal rights. Most importantly, the carbon footprint impact that this will leave on the city, the county, the state, and the world if any of this is allowed to go forward. And lastly, your legacy and our legacy to our kids and our grandkids, all are writing on your shoulders. Thank you.
Mr. Valenti.
Good evening. I too must correct the record. I signed up as Larry Dean Valenti. That is my name. Members of council, Mr. Mayor, the plan derives the resources. In this case, we do not have a plan. One has been filed, but for reasons unbeknownst to the citizenry, we're not considering the plan. If we were, maybe the angst over some of the zoning issues would be gone, and our conversations would be more constructive. Why? Zoning is a resource. Changing the zoning to R5 on parcel B is a mistake. The surrounding zoning is all R3.5, and this higher-level density is not a transition but a lowering of standards of the existing community and a strain on resources. On any given night, cars can be seen parked atop Lowell Hill watching the sunset. The entirety of the southern part of parcel B should be preserved as open space by the city. Pillar Fire should be compensated by the city for the purchase of this open space. Contrary to your comment to a councilor's question last night, Mr. Tripp, that is how open space is acquired, the city purchases private property. The spectacularness of this vista coupled with the last remaining portion of the city's original orchard adds historic value and should be preserved as there is little open-space preservation in this part of Westminster. Less than a year ago, Mayor Herb Atchison participated in a presentation at the Bisnaugh Future of the Northwest Corridor along with OREAD Principal Jeff Handlin. The purpose? Housing for the middle population in the area. OREAD had filed a preliminary development plan with the city prior to that. Mr. Mayor, I question whether or not you have violated quasi-judicial. Last night, approximately 70 people signed up to provide testimony. Clearly, someone has shuffled the deck of speakers to achieve a desired order of speaking as some of the earliest derivers who happen also to be speaking opposition were placed at the end of the process, and many are unable to speak as a result. If the city clerk is responsible, she should be replaced. If the mayor is responsible, he should be held accountable by his council for his actions. Like others, I came hoping to persuade this council that there are problems that will arise with traffic, water, pollution, congestion with increasing the zoning. I knew the battle was uphill. I left last night not upset at the outcome, but at the bastardization of the public hearing process that seems quite clearly contrived to achieve a desired outcome. Thank you.
Melanie Noakes, Leanne Pergola. Ms. Rankin-Burger, I got another sheet for you. So evidently, I have a duplicate. Thank you, ma'am. No, afraid not. Ms. Noakes.
Hello, my name's Melanie Noakes. I reside in Bradburn Village, one of the villages, Bradburn Village is often referred to as a comparison to what's going to be done in the uplands development. I grew up in Westminster, born and raised just around the corner. You just heard from my mom, Laura Noakes Lang. So I have a good understanding of what the hill is that they're talking about, parcel B. I grew up playing on that field. I grew up driving by it, I still do, when I go to visit my mom. I'm opposed to the change to high density. I'm not opposed to developing the land. And when my mom can attest to the fact that when they first talked about the fact that they were going to develop the land, she heard about it pretty early on, I said, Mom, it was going to happen. What I am opposed to is the density of the land. I have lived other places. I moved back to Colorado. I chose Westminster. I looked all over the city. It's not because of my family being here. I looked around Denver, I looked south, I looked west, because west's better, of course. And what I learned is Westminster is distinct. It is distinct because we preserve things like open space, trail systems. We have an incredible recreational community. It's a good place to live. I love it. I'm here for that reason. Why I'm opposed to parcel B, let's talk about that a little bit. The increased density, 40%. 40%. It was originally 100 houses. They told us this in the planning committee. Now it's 140. Pretty easy math, 40%. For context, Bradburn Village, I did some math, it's a little rough, just used the tools available to me, which are the comprehensive planning map, some zoning maps, counted, did some math, I got some information from HOA, 125 acres, so many units. I was able to calculate that that is a dwelling unit density of 5.5 roughly, because I don't have exact numbers, per acre. You can easily calculate what the OREED plan is. It is 10 dwelling units per acre, another 40% increase. Bradburn Village is already considered to be a dense population. I love it. It's great. There's a lot of reasons it works. It has a beautiful gem of an open space next to it, has gorgeous walking, has another beautiful park that is actually maintained by the city. The people in the community use that park all the time, and we use that open space as well. That dense of housing in the suburbs works because we have a way to get away from each other. People move to the suburbs so they're not on top of each other. So just consider this, OREED said they would not, they would still move forward even without this being approved. Thank you.
Ms. Pergola.
Mayor Atchison and city council members, thank you for listening to all of us. I'm not going to repeat what's already been repeated. At one of the last meetings, you asked if we were wanting to, if we did agree with somebody, that we should just make that known. So at the risk of missing some of the people that I do agree with, I also want it to be noted that I totally agree with Mrs. Rankin-Burger, Mr. Baker, Ms. Papa George, Laura Noakes Lang, Ms. Dare, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Valenti, Melanie Noakes. I agree with everything that they have said. That being, I'm not going to waste your time repeating the things about water, traffic, density, schools, et cetera. What I am here about is the view that will be taken away from everyone. "Oh, beautiful for spacious skies, for mountain waves of grain, for purple mountain majesties above thy fruited plain." And I think I've forgotten the words now because I am nervous here. "God shed His grace on thee." And this parcel B is a very, very small part of the entire city of Westminster, and yet it is there to be enjoyed by every person in the city that chooses to. I forgot to say that I live at 3720 West 81st Place. That is in Observatory Heights, which some people call Snob Hill. I would also like it to be noted that we are not snobs. We are everyday people. Most of us started with nothing. We worked hard. We earned our money the hard way. And over a period of years, we've been there for 35 years, we have made ourselves a life and a home in the small area of Observatory Heights. We also have friends and families throughout the entire city of Westminster. We care about all of them, not just ourselves. And so when you hear us complain about what's going to happen to parcel B, it is not just woe is me. We live in our big fancy houses, and we don't want anybody disrupting what we already have. That is truly not the case. I also understand that the people that own the properties have a right to sell them. I just believe that there is extremely, it's gone to the nth degree on crowding in and packing in as much as can be possible for the developers to make every dime that they can, and the city of Westminster cannot withstand it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, we're through the list. I'm sorry, ma'am, if you didn't sign up last night.
I signed up last night, and my name was not called.
Are you, what is your last name?
Uh, Tunberg, Mary Tunberg, and I have my phone number there.
There is no sheet here for you. I have no sheets for you, ma'am.
Well, I'm sorry. It was on, I signed up before I.
They found your sheet, correct? That's why you got called. Ms. Tunberg, I have no sheets for you.
Somebody didn't do the right job because I had, I was on the top line of a new page. Maybe they thought that there was nothing.
You signed up for the public comment period. You did not sign up for this. That was in the beginning, ma'am. You signed up for the public comment period, not for the public land use period. I want to give you three minutes, ma'am, so get up here, let's go.
My name is Mary Tunberg, and I want to remind everybody that you are very humbly a city council member to represent the people who live here. That for, since 1959, I've been in Westminster, well, in unincorporated Adams County, which is right at 86th and Lowell, basically. And, and all the taxes, all the money that needed to be paid for the water, that actually is way over what should be collected now. The, the effort that has taken place to keep a city organized and as prosperous and as quality of living, we've done our part. So now I really appeal to at least four of you to really consider what your vote will mean to us. The amount of density housing just at 84th and Federal between 84th and 88th is approximately equivalent to the Connections property that is right around the corner of City Hall. If you don't think that changes the character of Westminster, I ask each one of you who plan to vote yes on this to say no, we've got other options, because we certainly do. We certainly want Dr. Dolan back and his organization to be compensated for the fine land that he owns, but we don't need to turn it into stack-and-pack, basically slum housing. It may not be considered slum by some, but I don't think anybody, or the majority of people in the city, on the city council, live in those conditions. And I don't think we should be asking anybody else to live like that, to change the whole nature, the whole quality of what we've established as a standard. The, the important thing is for you really to know that
The, the important thing is for you really to know that it's not, you're here to, if you really want to know and represent the people without ask, well, I urge that we have a vote on this. If you want to, if you're going to do this kind of a drastic change to this dense population, and where are these people coming from, anyway? The free market isn't demanding this kind of sale for properties. Where's it, I mean, where are the people getting their jobs from? I mean, how much is HUD? How much are we having to pay for all this, this total destruction of our quality of life here? Why do I say that? Because it, it changes things. Maybe somebody who's got a business across the street from this whole project, you know, the whatever-
All right, Ms. Tunberg.
Anyway, I'm just saying, I ask each one of you to, to know that you've got a legacy to uphold. Thank you.
So I'm going back to those who recall last night, and these are the ones who did not show up. I have Aaron Keys. Looks like Keith Orwell. Kurt Pastus. All right, ladies and gentlemen, for the, while we make a switch over here and I get back all the papers out of the way, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute pause and give us a quick break.
It's now-
Well, you're so, I've sold like six of them. I do, I do. I just feel really bad about the calls. Yeah, but we all have, and we all have. That's what I mentioned. Yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we could reiterate. All right, at this point, we have taken all testimony from the public. I will declare the public hearing closed. At this time, we will turn to the applicant. This is your opportunity for rebuttal for any of the comments that you've heard in testimony tonight. Following that, there will be final comments from the city staff and staff recommendation. We will then close the public hearing. Then at that point, council, if you have any other questions that you need answered, we will deal with those at that time. All right, sir, it's on you.
Great. Good evening, mayor, councilors. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I would actually, I'd like to start by saying we'll have a few speakers to walk through the different issues that we heard, to be sure that we try to do that. We actually started with council questions and then listened to all the testimony and we'll try to walk through them. I'm also going to walk through the three parcels, because I actually think it's easier to address the issues while looking at the three parcels. But first of all, I'd like to start by thanking the neighbors, the stakeholders and city staff for their remarkable contributions and to shape the efforts of this vision and this plan for uplands. We believe this neighborhood must be attainable, providing a balanced housing mix for all residents of Westminster. Additionally, we must complement, connect to, blend and transition to all of our neighbors. We want to provide amenities, parks, open space, protect views, provide connections and utilities, and when we are finished, we want to feel as authentic as Shaw Heights. I also want to say, we trust your planning process. It is a very complex planning process. And I want to start with something that is, unfortunately, I believe we've kind of skipped or we've missed in the last number of speakers. For the last twenty-two years, the comp plan has envisioned the five parcels that make up uplands for development. They have been in the comp plan for twenty-two years. It is not your legacy, it is no one in this room's legacy, they have been in the comp plan. They will be developed in accordance with those comp plan. Today, and I just want to be clear about that, today, if there aren't changes to that, they will be developed. I want to be clear, and in no way do I mean that as a threat, those five parcels allow thirty-eight hundred units today. That's a maximum density, but I just want to see, in your comp plan today, thirty-eight hundred plus units. We have already said that we believe this is probably a twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred and fifty units. We want to step substantially down from what is already in your comp plan. So I just want to be clear that what we're here tonight are about three amendments to the parcels, the edge parcels. We are not talking about whether or not development can occur and what happens on parcel A. We completely agree with all the comments, that we have to work through the infrastructure changes, the traffic changes, all the things that happen, and that is why you have the PDP and ODB process. I also want to be sure and address, this is not a bait and switch, parcel A, which is the crown jewel, the largest site, that is T-Mund, that is zone T-Mund. And I know you all understand T-Mund, traditional mixed use, that allows to a maximum of R-18. So I just want to be very clear, that's actually zoned for more- So I just want to be very clear, that's actually zoned for more density, more than we're asking for in any of these other amendments. So that's certainly not part of the process. We're not going to come back. We want to develop under that existing comp plan. So why are we doing this? Why are we here for three, what we believe are very minor amendments? Because we want appropriate development to occur. We want to create a place that reflects the vision and goals and policies of Westminster. These amendments are integral to that vision. Further, staff and the planning commission believe that the three amendments are in compliance with your approval criteria, what you actually have to evaluate them against. Your process also ensures that we must continue to meet that approval criteria through each one of those steps. So again, I'll just briefly walk through the three parcels. First of all, parcel E, and I'm going to be very brief here because I haven't heard a lot of questions or comments about that. That is to change the land use designation from office to private park or private open space. Private open space or private park is a definition in your code. It's a category. In no ways does it mean private. It means maintain privately but open to others. We want this to be open space. We think this stands alone and is very beneficial to the project and very beneficial to the neighborhood and the connection to the Highland Hills amenities. We think this is very straightforward. Parcel D, as you all know, is a change from office to R-8. I believe there were two speakers that testified for more office or to keep office on this parcel. Staff, their first comment said, "This parcel is currently designated as office, but the site is not well positioned for office development." What changed? Why did this change from 2013? St. Anthony's North relocated most of their staff and operations. This is now identified, that area, St. Anthony's, is a redevelopment area. The change is because of that. Because of that event, that has changed what this site should be. So I just want to walk through kind of what are the results, the benefits of changing this instead of office to R-8. The benefits are, there's only 156 residential units maximum, rather than 325,000 square feet of office. There is significant lessening of traffic, impact particularly the AM and PM traffic. And the panorama to the east and Greenbrier to the south, those are R-18, so we're actually transitioning to R-8, a lower density than the surrounding residential. And this is also very important. We're going to add open space. First of all, the comp plan protects that view, which we all agree is incredible. So how can I say we're going to add open space? Because your office designation does not require public land dedication. So we, we do not dedicate open space in the office category. But as soon as you go to residential, we will make PLD, we will augment, supplement and add parks, trails, et cetera. So the open space is actually a terrific benefit that comes from this R-8 designation. Lastly, I'm going to trans, and actually I'd like to say about the utilities. The analysis, again, the utilities, schools, traffic, infrastructure, all of those things we have to continue to meet, whether it's office or the RE, R-8 residential. But this impact from 156 units rather than 325,000 is very minimal. That's why it meets your requirements of the comp plan amendments. Lastly, I want to transition to parcel B, and I really want to focus on parcel B for a moment. The staff report said the proposed amendment is compliant with the prime principle of the comp plan relative to well-designed, attractive neighborhoods and balanced housing mix. Specifically, the proposed amendment to parcel B provides the opportunity to increase housing diversity, which is a guiding principle of the comp plan. I have been guilty of this. Many people have, of talking about numbers, of talking about density. I have said this will add up to 40 additional units on this site. I want to say something. This change has not one thing to do with density. Up here, or maybe on your screen, shows parcel B, and I want to focus first on the observatory park south of Bradburn. Actually, I thought that Brad, or the Observatory Heights neighbors were incredibly eloquent about what they want to protect. Their character, their views, the view shed, the parks. You need to look at this to understand, R-5 actually allows us to protect those very characteristics. Why is that true? Because the flaw of R-3 and a half is that it requires a minimum lot of 7,000 square feet. So to develop that area, you see the white triangle there. That's kind of the development envelope. And then on the right, you see what we add there. We add the view corridors that are protected. That's the purple, and then you see we add public land dedication to the two other triangles. So we're only left with that small area there in the middle. That's a clustered area that we can develop with smaller lots. If we have to develop under R-3 and a half, we actually have to push into that, to push into the hills, to actually obstruct that. So the R-5, the allowance of having smaller lots, actually allows us to protect the very values that Observatory Heights wants us to protect. We have the same interest. It is hard to see, but you see the end result of this. If we have larger lots, we have to actually build closer. We actually obstruct those views. We touch their properties. Here, we protect their views. We give them more passive open space, and it's actually incredibly beneficial. Transition across Bradburn. Mountain Terrace Apartments are 154 units. They are R-18. They sent a letter into you all saying, "We don't want 7,000 square foot lots right against this." Why? Because there's no apartments against a large lot. That's not the right transition. Your code, your guiding documents say, "Transition." That's what R-5 does. So when a Shaw Heights person said, "There's a perfect transition," it's not the transition, it's the mountain terrace transition to these lots. All we're doing again is doing proper land use planning to really bring this forward. I'll just say, and then we'll talk about the utilities from our engineer. Regardless of how parcel B develops, we have to build the infrastructure, whether it's R-3 and a half or R-5. So the drainage, the traffic, all of those things have to be addressed, and we have a plan to address that, and your code requires all of that. But it's this increment, this increment of up to 40 units that we're asking you to approve, because it actually gives us more benefit for the existing neighbors, not for us. I want to lastly say on the south side of Bradburn, we cannot get anywhere close to five dwelling units per acre. We can't achieve it. It's too small of a cluster when we do that. So our density is going to be the same there as the existing neighborhood, but we need R-5 to allow those smaller lots. So I just want to make that clear, and I'm happy to go through that, but that's a very important thing. We agree with observatory parks, and the way we deliver it is actually with R-5. And now we're going to have, we're going to walk through the utility questions.
Good evening. Todd Johnson. I'm going to go through and give a little more depth to a couple of points that have been brought up tonight on environmental, the utilities and infrastructure that Phil mentioned, and also just touch on the traffic. What I'd like to read to you is, is our environmental study that was put together that identified wetlands, threatened and endangered species, observation and cultural resources. And from the conclusions in this report, they did not observe the presence of waters of the US, wetlands, as designated by the Corps. And they also did not identify the presence of federally listed endangered species on the site, that's animals or plants. And they also did not observe critical habitat. So there's been some discussion on the environmental side. If we have done an analysis, we have done an analysis, and we continue to do those analyses as we move forward in the project. But to this point in time, we have not identified anything that is on the federal registrar, or actually wetlands on the project, which are also major elements that we always look for and try to preserve on projects. Let me touch on some of the infrastructure, and I think the infrastructure and also the traffic. There are great benefits that this project brings to the city. If we go through and identify things from a couple of different categories here on the water side, when Phil was just talking about the difference that we make on this project, when you think about a 7,000 square foot lot, you have a lot of that as open space, and that's irrigated areas typically on residential lots. And what happens when we get into the R-5 areas, and we also get into the R-8 areas, we actually reduce the area of irrigated, or those, those areas that we'd have plant material outside, which are large consumers of water. And sometimes what those can turn out to be is two to three times savings from what you'd get from traditional larger lots. And so this overall project actually helps with the sustainability from the city's perspective on the water side. From the larger perspective, we have actually gone above and beyond what we typically do on projects, and we have analyzed not only our site, but we also analyzed the overall city infrastructure from a water perspective and a sewer perspective. And we've gone two or three miles off of this site to analyze deficiencies that are currently out there in the city systems. And this project has identified those improvement areas and has also talked about making those improvements for the city. So it's not just our impact that we're, we're solving for. We're also solving for the impacts that are currently out there in the system. From a transportation perspective, again, I would go back to what we currently have, and what you have in front of you is the comp plan. When we look at the comp plan, and we look at the traffic generation that this project could have, we're talking over 28,000, almost 30,000 trips per day. This reduction in what we have on the overall project is actually pulling that number down to about 18,000. So if we go back to the 2,350 that's been referenced, we can actually only, or we would only generate about 18,000 trips. What we do on this specific, these three parcels that we're talking about tonight, again, is E, of course, has a reduction in traffic. D also has a reduction in traffic, and B has a slight increase. When you look at those together, what we're getting is only 36 ADT in addition to what is there currently today. And again, in the AM and PM, as been mentioned, those numbers actually come down because of the difference that we have between the uses. So we're going from a office use actually back down into residential use, and those numbers actually turn out to be less. What I'll also talk about lastly is, as professional engineers, our number one job is public safety. And what you see out there today is you see a lot of missing links. And it's not just the traffic impacts that we have to worry about. But I think the more important element that we're looking at here on this project, when we actually do come through and do improvements, is we're increasing public safety. There are missing links today with the sidewalks that are out there. And this project will connect those sidewalks that you see on your screen and make those, those vital connections so that we don't have people walking down the shoulder. We have safer intersections. We'll be doing improvements at the intersections that are out there today, improving the signals, widening the roads. We are not widening onto existing properties that are out there. So the example that may have been referenced tonight was Lowell. Those improvements are not happening on those residents' property. Those improvements are all being pushed on to the Uplands project, and we are taking the burden of those additional improvements to help with the, the capacity deficiencies again that are out there today, and also the additional traffic that we will have with the overall project. So again, I think, you know, in summary, when you think about this project in an overall context, this project actually provides that safety, and it provides a lot of those missing elements that are out there, and elements that would really complete this area and provide a complete link to this. Thank you.
Good evening. Bonnie Nijelik with Norris Design. Thank you again for your time this evening. I'm going to touch on two areas related to the comp plan. Thanks, Jacob. First, we heard a couple of comments on the focus areas and where development should occur, and then just wanted to talk briefly about the approval criteria again. So starting with the focus areas, a couple of people brought this up, and I'm sure you all know this. This is pulled directly from your code, or from the comp plan. But the comp plan notes the Dr. Cog Metrovision 2035 Plan as a planning influence. And it identifies this area as part of the urban growth boundary, and it identifies urban centers. Urban centers are areas that could be developed or intensified to meet the goals of the plan to locate 50% of all new housing units and 75% of all new jobs in urban centers between 2005 and 2035. These five urban areas are also your five focus areas. So again, 50% of the housing units, it does not say all the housing units should occur in those urban centers or focus areas. Two of those focus areas are downtown Westminster and Westminster Station. Downtown Westminster has a minimum density of 16 deus per acre. Westminster Station has densities of a minimum from 12 up to 32 deus per acre, depending on location. So those two focus areas are helping provide higher density housing. You already have a great existing stock of lower density housing. It's critical that in order to meet these diverse housing needs, that you find that missing piece as well. You need to balance the existing housing stock of single family, this great new housing stock of house, of higher density homes that you're adding to these focus areas with something in between, something like what we're talking about today. The comp plan also talks about development potential. It assumes that the majority of vacant lands and sites with development for redevelopment, infill or intensification will occur by 2035. The plan is not intended to specify or anticipate when this development potential will actually be realized, nor does the designation of a site for a certain use necessarily mean that the site will be built, redeveloped with that use in the next 22 years. It also states that the citywide development potential is not a fixed or final number. As time passes, new opportunities for redevelopment and infill will arise beyond the sites currently identified as focus areas. The plan clearly states that development is not specifically limited to only occur in focus areas, or is limited by the plan's development potential. Second, just going back to the comp plan and the approval criteria. Last night, we had the opportunity to hear Ms. McConnell give a great presentation on the development review process and our collective roles in that process. Your code notes the comp plan serves as the official policy document of city council and planning commission to provide a consistent statement of the city's plans and policies for future development to bring about the city's vision for the future. It ensures that new development, new development occurs in the desired areas and in concert with the city's vision and the infrastructure capacity. The 2019 strategic plan describes this vision. It includes distinct neighborhoods, quality educational opportunities, and a resilient local economy that includes a spectrum of jobs and diverse integrated housing. There are 10 specific approval criteria that you use to judge these land use amendments. Many of these focus on the consistently, consistently, consistency with the city's vision, with adopted plans, policies and guidelines, how it serves public purpose, orderly growth, and what has changed. It also talks about impacts to referral agencies, adjacent properties and infrastructure. There's one critical change that has happened since the 2013 plan. This is the recommendations of the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment. The study discusses demographics. It states that accommodating a variety of housing choices and price points will be important to attract new residential workers and employers. It looks at the city's housing profile and affordability, and notes the ability for residents become homeowners has dropped. The findings on development trends and housing stocks note that the residential unit distribution will need to slip, shift slightly toward higher density to accommodate the expected growth. And it recommends increasing the diversity of housing available for purchase through a two-pronged approach, by adding residential housing products and build community in older neighborhoods through infill, and enabling greater diversity by new construction. Today, 26% of the city is designated as R-3 and a half. All other residential designations from R-1 to R-36 and T-Mund only amount to 11% of the city. This existing mix of residential land use designations does not meet the recommendation to increase the diversity of housing available for purchase, and it does not enable greater diversity. There are few remaining sites in Westminster for large-scale neighborhood planning. The proposed Upland Community represents an opportunity for all of us to help realize the housing and neighborhood principles of the comp plan on a significant scale. These amendments provide a key opportunity for all of us to work together to achieve this vision of a resilient local economy that includes a spectrum of jobs and diverse integrated housing. We also heard last night about, in the development review process summary, about the city's municipal code guidelines and standards. They're the regulatory codes that implement this vision. We know we have a lot of work to do. Our next step for the entire Uplands development is a rezoning. One of those criteria is to prove to all of you that there is existing capacity in the city's street, drainage and utility systems to address the project, or we provide that capacity in a timeframe acceptable to city council. We need to work with staff. We need to work with all of you. We need to work with the neighbors. We need to work with the referral agencies to prove to all of you that this project can meet the infrastructure demands that are required for it. We're here to focus on this city's vision tonight so that we can move to that next step and prove to all of you how we can address those issues. We have one last speaker. Jeff wants to do a quick wrap-up, but of course, her whole team will be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bonnie, and I'll be very brief. I wanted to address a couple of things that I heard that are not before you, but that I wanted you to hear a response to. And some of those questions were from you, you coun- And some of those questions were from you, you councilors. One was about affordable housing, and I want to make sure I address that. There are very big differences between affordable subsidized housing and attainable housing, which is attainable in our project by design, by the type and size of project. A 950-square-foot cottage is a great example, one of the things that Mr. Senke brought as an example last night. That's a product called We Cottage, that's something we plan to introduce in our project. That's not before you today. That is an attainable project that is not subsidized in any way. Affordable housing is something that is subsidized. It's always a, typically, it's a rental unit, and it requires a subsidy from the city, state, or federal level. I know because I used to work in this industry, in the Section 42 low-income housing tax credit industry. It's very important to us, we're a mission-driven organization. We will have both affordable and attainable housing in our project. It is critically important to us to provide a full spectrum of housing to this city, and that includes affordable, senior, and attainable housing. Not only what we've seen most so far in the last few decades, larger houses that are single-family and apartment buildings that are market rate. Of course, you'll see those things in our project, but a full spectrum of housing includes all those things. Those details aren't before you today, but I promise you, we are working diligently every day behind scenes with folks that you know to provide affordable housing in this project. That's one thing I wanted to make sure I, and you'll see details from us soon. In the coming months, you'll see the PDP before us, knock on wood, and you'll be able to see those details. Secondly, parcel B views. I want you to hear it from me, the buck stops here. Those views on the top of that hill in parcel B are going nowhere, nowhere. The flat spot at the top is public park, public forever, and the grove that you see out there is going to remain. So that's not something we're willing to compromise on. That's something that we compromised from an earlier view of our project, and I think you saw it when Marcus showed you the slide. That is critically important to us. The other critically important area is the other mentioned by the email that I think Councilor Smith referenced, which was the hill at parcel D, the southeast corner of parcel D. That also, that view shed of downtown Denver, will remain forever as a public park and view corridor. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about, if we're going to be serious about lessening vehicle dependency, then we've got to rely on the assets that we already have, including your commuter rail, which is a wonderful asset, and the existing bus stop at 86th and Federal. While there is no intersection or crossing at 86th and Federal amazingly today, we are going to get that crossing. That's the first thing that Crown Point asked us for, safety for their kids. Get those kids across that street safely. So in terms of children, schoolchildren, and safety, I don't think you're going to find a developer more committed than we are. So we will build crossings and pedestrian sidewalks, because I agree, it is a very dangerous condition for those kids at Flynn Elementary, Shaw Heights, and Crown Point. Lastly, it's taken us two and a half years to get here. Trust me, we have lots of detail to show you. It's just not that point in the process yet. I can't wait to answer your questions if you had any more tonight, and I can't wait to provide more details about this project for you in the coming months. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Tripp, the staff have any other items that they'd like to present?
I just want to make a couple of comments, and then I'm going to turn it to Rita McConnell to address some of the questions that were raised earlier this evening. And I'll be brief. First thing I'd say is that we provided to you, I think, good background, staff information, and research. We're bound to address requests for approval of comprehensive land use plan amendments by this document here that's been handed out this evening, and I think we've done a good job of that. I also want to share with you that we provided an agenda memorandum that is much more detailed and more comprehensive about the full set of processes that relate to the furtherance of this project. And I would invite you, if you haven't read that document, to take a look at it, because each and every word in there was crafted specifically to address kind of the long-term view of this project. And the last thing I'd say is, I just want to take a second and compliment our staff from the planning department that took us through, I think, a very comprehensive review of those guidelines and their assessment of that, and a whole number of other city staff that over the course of the last couple of weeks have spent an awful lot of time here. I appreciate them, and they're here available. Most of them probably won't be asked questions tonight, but they've taken time out tonight, last night, two weeks ago, in a 19-hour day and an 18-hour day, and I really, really appreciate it. And with that, Rita, would you go ahead and address maybe some of the things we heard in the question and answer period?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilors. You've heard numerous times the past two nights about the need to keep focus on this, and the focuses related to the use and density of the proposal, and you have very specific criteria, which you'll now apply to all the public testimony you've heard the past two nights. Staff will help assist you keeping that focus by only really addressing comments and answering items pertaining to that. You will probably hear us deferring questions or comments to that PDP stage, and I think that'll help you in your deliberation. We did hear comments about water and traffic, and staff did answer questions related to that last night. Tonight, we did hear more comments about view corridors and density, and Jacob will answer or add comments to those comments that were made. He will also address ADA housing, that is not part of this criteria, but we think it's important enough to make a statement about that at this time. And again, we have the whole team available to answer questions, whatever you have. So I'll turn it over to Jacob at this point.
Good evening, councilors. First, I'd like to answer the question that Councilor Smith raised yesterday, or yes, last night, about Bradburn and the density of Bradburn. So Bradburn, as planned, was 113 acres with 805 dwelling units permitted in the original ODP. That would have resulted in a density of 7.12 dwelling units per acre gross. That's a T-Mund designated parcel, so doesn't particularly apply to parcels B, D, or E when we're thinking about those, but it is something to think about in consideration of the larger project. Another one that's a similar T-Mund project that you might be thinking of in your head is Highland Village. That's 71.53 acres and originally permitted for 426 dwelling units. That density is 5.95 dwelling units per acre gross. I'd also like to make just a slight correction to one of the answers I gave you last night about the PLD that this project could owe. I gave you a range of 80 to 85 acres, and the range would actually be 76 to 80 acres. I went back and checked my math this morning. Some of the questions brought up or the comments offered by the audience was on view corridors, and Rita and I would like to read specifically from the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 6, and this is page 6-12, 6.4 Views. The Comprehensive Plan identifies view corridors along portions of the city's major street network and from key public spaces as shown in Figure 6-2. The designation of these view corridors preserves the most significant views from the public realm. Areas with a designated view corridor may be subject to additional setback requirements, height restrictions, and modified perimeter landscaping or site configurations to ensure that new development will not restrict views. Development proposed within these corridor areas will be evaluated to preserve views wherever possible. Further, later in Chapter 6, under the policies, under CID-P-23, and this is on page 6-27, ensure that designated view corridors are integrated into planning for new development. Preservation of view corridors may require dedication of land, building or upper-story setbacks, and modified building orientation and placement. So that's more something that's, to us, says the Comprehensive Plan is indicating that we will protect those view corridors in a PDP, either through some sort of land dedication, setback restrictions, height restrictions. That's something that we're still talking with the applicant through. They have submitted their PDP. We are talking about a view corridors with them. There has not been an agreement or anything from staff on whether we would support those view corridors to be preserved as public land or private land, and exactly how that would be. We're waiting on the applicant to resubmit their PDP, and I believe that's when we would take another look as to whether staff would support that. As far as the density categories that were mentioned, a lot of the comments from the audience has been that this is high density, and I'd like to point you to the attachments in the Agenda Memo, specifically Attachment 3. At the title, at the top of Attachment 3, under R5 residential dwelling units, this is listed as a moderate density, and that's in the narrative in R5 residential. And then same for R8, that is also listed as a moderate density. City staff considers high density for the comp plan to be the R18 category and the R36 category. We consider R5 and R8 to be moderate density. Lastly, on ADA housing. ADA housing is not a criteria for the Comprehensive Plan. It's also not a criteria for the preliminary development plan. It is something that the city does observe through the building permit process, and it applies specifically to developments and unit counts. So it's not something that we would look at or consider at this stage. And if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them as well.
All right, I'll come back to you in just a minute. Anything else, Mr. Tripp? All right. At this point, I will open up the questions at the council to either the applicant or the city staff, so would you please address your questions to me, and then we'll determine who's going to answer them. Mr. Demont?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question I actually have, follow up to what Jacob, what you were just talking about as far as the visual corridors. And so if, say, for example, B was left as a 3.5 and they came back with a PDP, you would still evaluate that, look to protect those visual corridors, whether R5 or R5?
Yes, councillor. So regardless of the land use designation, pick any one out of there, the city staff would still ensure that the PDP had some protection for the view corridor. It could depend on what the designation is, whether we apply a height restriction, dedication of land, some sort of setback or such. We did a basic analysis of what we think the view corridor should be, and that's something that we expect the applicant to present as a part of their PDP for their PDP submittal would be something that would show that this view corridor is protected and preserved.
Okay, thank you. The next question, the first speaker during the rebuttal of the applicant, he had talked about the need to be able to lot sizes. So can you walk me through, and I should know this, but I'm just curious. So if it's R3.5, does that mean you have to build to R3.5, or could you build something smaller on the bigger lot? Or how does that work backwards? I know what the maximum density is, but if your maximum density is R3.5, are you allowed to build less if it's zoned that?
Yes, so under the R3.5 Comprehensive Plan designation, the 3.5 is the maximum dwelling units per acre you would be allowed to build. It is not a requirement that you build that, it's not a minimum. Some categories do have a minimum amount of units you have to build. That category does not, so that's the maximum. They could build one house on the entire property and still be in compliance with R3.5. The one thing that they did mention was the minimum lot size requirement. R3.5 has a minimum lot size requirement of 7,000 square feet. That's pretty typical, that used to be in the older comp plans, it was actually an average of 7,000 square feet. So some of the older R3.5 neighborhoods you might see will be ranges around 7,000 square feet. For this development here, as they're proposing to change it to R5, that eliminates that 7,000 square foot minimum lot size, which they could go smaller. I believe yesterday I gave the example of Tuscany Trails, and it had about a 4,000-something square foot lot size as an average in the neighborhood.
And that makes sense, and I guess my question comes from, you know, I started thinking about that yesterday as you gave some visual examples. So a visual example to me of R3.5 is, my neighborhood is R3.5 over in Countryside. I believe almost entirety of the original countryside is R3.5. So, I mean, like, my lot is actually pretty small. I don't know what it is in actual lot size, but it's not a huge lot. So just trying to visualize what that looks like in some different neighborhoods outside of observatory heights. And the last question, I think, Mr. Mayor, is probably for the applicant, but you can decide. In the opening statement of the applicant for the rebuttal, you had talked about some, did I hear right, that, you know, both from the staff and the applicant, that we do anticipate greater traffic from B if that change goes forward?
Please, yeah. Sir, I'm going to, councillor, I'm going to hand that off. I just want to say, just to address that question first and then hand it to our traffic engineer, I think what we said, sir, is that if you built to the maximum density, right? If you do go to the maximum density, because that's how we should evaluate things, right? Then we could have up to 40 additional units, so just being straightforward about that. So that would add average daily trips because you have additional units. What we don't know is if we can actually meet that maximum density. So that's something that we're going to evaluate. But regardless, what I was saying is, whether it's R3.5 or R5, that infrastructure all has to be built to meet your standards. So those standards reflect really what's built there. I will say, from a sustainability and all the other factors, that large lot, affordability, attainability, traffic, that really is contrary to the sustainability model, and that's why we think this is actually much more reflective of those goals. Specific to traffic, if you want those numbers involved in that?
Yeah, so this information is in the packets that you do have, but on B, just going from the 3.5 to the 5, we have 38780 average daily traffic, 30 in the AM and 41 in the PM peak conditions. And we've actually, again, we're talking comp plan here, but we've taken that to a next level in our analysis as part of the PDP, and we've analyzed the intersection at 84th and Lowell, and we've analyzed these other intersections that we could have, plus what Marcus said is, we don't think we'll get to the total unit count here, so we think these numbers will only get better. And even at those other intersections, when we analyze them, we still get acceptable levels of service, and of course, improvements at those intersections because of the improvements that we will be doing with this project.
Thank you. The last thing, I don't know if you could bring up the slide that they had up with the, how the layout would be for that parcel B?
I think it's Slide 89.
I'm trying to understand the difference between the left and the right. On the left, there's a lot more that is being marked as what can be built there, and then the other part is showing the visual corridor, and I'm trying to understand exactly what you anticipate actual build-out would look like on that north or south half of parcel B.
Absolutely.
Councillor Demont, so the blue triangle, blue-purple triangle, is a view corridor that is required in your comp plan, from what we understand. It was denoted in your comp plan. It's always something that staff has been pretty clear about, that that is the view corridor that I think people have been asking about, that would require setbacks and height restrictions. However, we volitionally, voluntarily, right, are removing units from the top of that hill, which is the green portion to the south. The left version with more white in it is our old plan, and that's where 3.5 came in, 7,000 square foot lots, larger lots, chewing up more land. The right image is R5, our version of the R5 plan, which provides more park plan and less developable land because of the 7,000 square foot minimum lot going to a smaller minimum.
And that makes sense from your presentation, and I guess what I'm trying to bring together and mesh is the fact that corridor would likely be protected in the PDP because of the comp plan, and us wanting to protect that. So if you didn't get the R5 and we said we wanted to leave this R3.5, then what does this look like for you guys?
Our choice is to make some hard choices about less green space, more white space. I don't know. I mean, that's, I guess, putting it simply, it's going to force a larger minimum lot size, which is going to force more developable land, if that makes sense. The purple part, that triangle, is something that we've always understood that was going to be a view corridor. The green part is something, frankly, that we sought to lot, to put residential units there instead of a park. This change would allow us to devote that top part to a park.
Okay, and I understand that. And so my last question that I really would like you to kind of address is, and you talked a little bit about the apartments that are R18 that back up to this north part of this lot, but you haven't really, you know, put any visuals to what that looks like. So I'm trying to understand this transition in the whole parcel, because we're not just, you know, I don't have the choice in front of me to do half the parcels, so I'm trying to understand your full plan there.
Visuals, meaning pictures, councillor?
Not necessarily pictures, but paint a picture for me with your words as far as like, what that looks like. Is that going to be exactly the same kind of product on the other half of Bradburn Avenue?
Yeah.
You know, how is that? You know, how is that transition gonna be from, you know, the 3.5, if you
Right.
To the 5 and down that hill?
So in terms of typology visually, the units that are in mountain terrace are multiple units, two-to-three story walk-up units. And the units that you'll see in an R5 in the north portion of B will be two-story, most likely, single-family detached. So you're gonna see something that is, scale-wise, very similar to those buildings, but much smaller. They're not gonna be as long, but in terms of the height, it'll be very similar, whereas you've got a lot of one-story homes to the west in Shaw Heights and also to the south in Observatory Heights. So we're really trying to transition from two-to-three stories to two-story product to nothing, basically, to mostly a park and open space. Does that help in terms of typology? You're not gonna see a lot of three-, four-story product on the north side of that road there. Our current plan contemplates two-story product, which would mesh with mountain terrace.
Great, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, anyone else have any questions of either the staff or the applicant? Ms. Scully, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we, it was mentioned several times about the missing middle and how we're trying to provide housing for the missing middle. And so I kept wondering, as we were discussing this, that, and I don't know where this question goes, I don't know if it goes to staff or it goes to the developer.
Go ahead and ask it, we'll figure it out.
Okay. So this B parcel is designated for R3.5. We're proposed, or it's being proposed, R5. How does that affect the cost of the houses? Is there a difference? Do we have any idea if there would be a difference? Because a $300,000 house is not actually affordable or attainable. But I understand that it is the going rate in this city. I do understand that I own a house, and I'm amazed at how much it is worth, and not sure that I could buy it today, which is interesting. So can you tell me how that would affect the change in the cost?
We'll give that to the applicant, because asking a question on the price of product is not from staff.
Councillor, happy to answer it. It's impossible for us at this point to pinpoint the exact price, what it would be as an R3 home versus what it would be as an, I'm sorry, R3.5 to an R5. I can directionally give you the decisions we make to try to drive pricing down, not up, right? So one of the decisions is less land. Someone mentioned before, you know, I have a 7,000 square foot lot and a 1,000 square foot house on top of it. The truth is that that could never happen today because of the economics that you all understand very well. You can't put a very small home on a very large lot. Also, it would be watering a lot of sod, frankly. So that's where we start, is really, frankly, lot size. Things like setbacks and things like that, where you give folks lots of parks in the area as opposed to lots of side yards and backyards. That eliminates cost by itself. The next thing we would do is look for typology. As opposed to a ranch brick home or a two-story, single-family detached with a front-load two-car garage, there's lots of decisions that we can make to pin and to start to shave off square footage that might be inefficient. And lastly, I think that you have to look at materials, the way the homes used to be built versus materials that are more environmentally sustainable today, and frankly, are cheaper. They're more, they're sourced from environmentally sustainable sources, not hardwoods, but they're also, they allow us to produce product at a lower product, a lower price, our development community. So directionally, while I can't give you prices on what 3.5 and R5 would, there's three or four things I can point to immediately that would naturally make it cheaper to build in an R5 location versus an R3.5, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. So my next question was, we talk a lot about the footprint that we're leaving on our land, building more housing. How, how will the environmental impact be reduced?
There's a number, councillor, there's a number of factors in traditional planning that led to some resource wastage. One of them, we've already talked about, is lot size, the big one. And the other thing is, you know, the components of your parks. You know, if a park is all sod, it uses a lot more water than a mixture of natural materials, natives, and sod. So it starts with landscaping, and then things like front yards and tree lawns. Those are typically sodded. But what if they were pollinator gardens? They're required less water off drip lines, more and more water savings. A lot of that water savings is there in how we treat landscaping, traditional suburban model versus a new urbanist model. Beyond that, material, as I mentioned, the materials that are used today are far more sustainable than the materials used just 20 years ago. So materials is another important component that we place. Lastly, the efficiency of the boxes, of the units that are built there. Whether they be apartment buildings, townhomes, bungalows, courts, or houses, those have hot, much higher efficiency standards than in the past. Furthermore, if they're smaller, they're far more efficient by design. So there's a lot of things we can do to lower our carbon footprint versus a traditional suburban conventional subdivision. And there's lots of great research out there that can quantify it. It's pretty complex stuff. We haven't modeled it, because you have to have a lot of details towards the end. We'd have to be in a plat process to kind of model it. But directionally, I can assure you, it's far more efficient, resource-wise.
What is the predicted square footage of the homes?
I don't know. There'd be a lot of classifications of homes here, right? So there'd be an apartment, a rental apartment, which would have one average square footage that would make sense to you. And then there would be a lot of other for-sale product, right? So a single-family detached, single-family detached. I frankly, councillor, I don't know the average of all those product lines. I just, I don't have it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We talked about how this land was designated for 3,800 units, and this, by changing the designation of the land, we'd be taking it to 2,300 units? Is that what I understood?
I just want to address that, and I was trying to kind of make a clarity of the five parcels today, because I think a lot of people just want to talk about should develop and occur or not. So my point was, in all five parcels that are not before you tonight, the comp plan allows 3,800-plus units, just today, okay? Whether we're here, whether we're the applicant or not. What we are here to ask for, as you know, are three amendments. Up to 40 units on parcel B, 156 units, up to 156 units instead of 325,000 square feet of office, and then open space. So we are talking total cumulative in our three amendments, about 196 units is what we're here to. So I was trying to separate that. I think people just tried to understand what is the overall impact of that. And I want to say to that, that's the process that we all have to go through together. That's still coming. We just believe these amendments are consistent with your vision for the city that's in the guiding documents.
Okay, thank you. Originally, I missed this somehow, what was parcel E originally designated? What was gonna go there? Do we know?
So it's currently designated office.
And you're going to put a park there? Still, it still stresses me that there's no affordable or attainable or senior housing considered in B, D, or E. E set aside, but B and D. And that is kind of weighing heavy on me.
Sure.
And I don't want to get into A, because it's not on the table tonight, so I, you know. So why wasn't there any consideration of attainable, affordable? I know it's been called attainable. That is a question in my mind.
Yeah, so here's a, I want to just answer your question directly as it relates to these comp plan amendments. The existing parcel A, or parcel B, is R3.5. That is by definition the most unaffordable product that you have, okay? So that is the most expensive product you have in your code today, because it's the largest lot, okay? So making this change makes us have the ability to have attainable housing, right? So this is the first opportunity, we're actually moving towards smaller, compact, more attainable product. Without it, we can never achieve that. That's by definition, right? So the very thing you're asking for is why we're making that change. Parcel D, it's office. There is no housing there. So we're adding a diversity. There may be, R8 could have different ranges, different house types there. So we're not saying at all that there's not gonna be affordable or attainable. We're saying we need these amendments to actually move to that. And that discussion about capital A affordable, right, kind of the 30% to 60% AMI, or attainability from 80% to 140% AMI, that all comes forward in the PDP. But I can assure you, it does not happen on parcels B or D without these comp plan amendments.
There's, I think it's number nine that really, and councillor Smith really addressed this in the beginning, but I want to go back and revisit it. The proposed amendment will not negatively impact referral agencies, and color Department of Transportation is named specifically. Can you address at all how?
Yeah.
You talked about a crossing at 86th and Federal, and frankly, we've had some issues working on Federal, which is why we're now going to have a study.
Right.
So I'm just curious, how are you going to get a crossing at 86th and Federal?
Absolutely, and I'm gonna let our traffic engineer answer that more specifically. But one thing I want to say, those two referral comments that were mentioned by CDOT and also Adams County, those were about the overall site. As you know, none of these amendments actually touch Federal, right, besides the one corner of D. So that's actually something that we have to continue to work through. So we know that those have to be addressed. The opportunity that we have on this site is actually to provide the connectivity, the sidewalks, the porosity, the roadways through the site. Without these, the development of that, that's what brings that forward. So again, I concur entirely with those referral comments, but those were made to the overall site. I would specifically say, look at the content of the Adams County. It said, "We want sidewalks, we want connections, we want street improvements." They talked about the very things that we want to do on these parcels.
Okay.
From a CDOT perspective, as part of this comp plan, we don't really give a detailed traffic report. However, as I mentioned before, we have done a detailed traffic report as part of our PDP process. And so the CDOT referral comment, I think spurs some of, or a lot of their comments spur from that actual report. And so what I can tell you is that we have worked closely with them. We're also setting a meeting with the city and CDOT to try to work more collaboratively on making sure that the improvements that we're talking about, the mitigation elements that we're talking about, are actually something that we can all get on board with. Because some of our initial meetings, it was really more a matter of, okay, we got this traffic report, can you tell us about your site and go through that stuff? So we've actually sat down with them, and we've explained all of the elements that we have along their corridor. Obviously, the safety improvements that Phil just mentioned are a major concern for them. There's also accident data that we've been looking at and talking through, and how do we try to solve some of those issues that are out there right now? We talked about the connection and the pedestrian connection going back over to the school at Crown Point. Those are all considerations that we really dug into deep. But again, and not as part of the comp plan process, we really don't go down that road that far. We're only looking at a high-level, 30,000-foot level. But we have, I can tell you, from our PDP perspective, gotten into the details, and we are furthering that discussion along with the city helping us there to have that discussion and get into that more detail there. So I think a lot of those comments that you saw were on the initial report that we put together. We addressed a lot of those comments, actually, and have resolved most of those. It's really now just getting to that final point, like I say again, to go through the final details and some of those agreements on what are gonna happen at those intersections.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So some of the questions are for staff, some are for the applicant. So first, yeah, I believe this is for staff. Do we have any type of artwork, public artwork designation as part of these projects?
Yes, councillor. So the city does have a public art requirement that applies to commercial development or industrial office developments, and it applies in the T-Mund category as well. It does, and, sorry, it also applies to multifamily. So it's not something that we consider at the comprehensive plan stage. It will come up in the official development plan, and then depending on the priority of the city, we'll either take public art or we will take cash and loo.
Has the orchard that has been discussed in public comment been considered for open space?
So councillor, that's actually, I'm glad you brought that up. So the orchard is not an orchard. Those are not apple trees, they're not fruit-bearing trees. They are honey locusts, and they are green ash trees. Our city forester has been out to the property himself. He has assured me of what the trees are. I have seen them myself, I can tell you, they are not orchard trees. Our estimate is that the trees are actually placed there as part of a tree farm, and probably because they wanted the north slope, because it stayed more moist. As far as considering it for open space, that's a comment generally for the PDP, and we're not necessarily thinking of dedicating, requiring that as public land dedication. It is part of what we would designate as the view corridor and would be left to not be developed.
In the report, excuse me, not the report, in the items that were as part of attachments, there was talk of a potential pedestrian underpass. Is that still a consideration by staff?
Jason, you want to answer that?
Good evening, council. Jason Gang, Director, Parks, Recreation and Libraries. And your question was, there's reference to consideration of an underpass?
Under federal, yes.
Under federal, yeah. So that would be another thing that we would evaluate when we do get further along in the planning phase. But I will say that as Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director, certainly, one of my considerations that I'm gonna providing input on is the entire mobility of that area. We have opportunities that we can improve the mobility that need to be seriously considered if this plan moves forward. An underpass was discussed. As a concept, there's a great regional park, for example, Highland Hills Park, and we need to make sure people have safe access. And underpass is one of the things we talked about.
Thank you. And I believe the rest of the questions are for the applicant. And I believe that you had mentioned this, but could you refresh my memory and just quickly summarize how long this group has been working on this project?
Councillor Smith, we have been in discussions with the land seller for, golly, almost six, seven years. And so in terms of our involvement with the city and its staff, that would be about two and a half years or so.
There was a comment in the public comment process that the land isn't purchased, and this kind of goes back to councillor Demont's question about what would it mean if we didn't approve a 3.5 to a 5 as far as building this area?
So councillor Smith, I think the question, I'll try to take a stab at, what happens if any of these don't get approved? And that includes the comp plan before you, the comp plan amendments before you this evening. It also includes any PDP or any other hearings that we have before you. Every hearing, or every one of these approvals is conditional upon the land seller conveying the property. So if this project is never approved, and the land seller never conveys the property, none of these approvals become effective. That's to ensure that you don't approve something that lasts forever when you know it doesn't, it's not going to happen. So it ensures that there's no remnant approvals out there. In terms of what happens if we don't get approval for one specific parcel, was that your other question, councillor Smith?
Yes, yes.
I really can't tell you, to be honest with you. I think that's a decision for our team. Ultimately, the buck stops with me, but we would consult internally and see what kind of consequence that would have for us and the land plan. As I mentioned before, you know, we're attempting to put together the best land plan that we can. We believe that R5 accomplishes that.
Going back to traffic, what's the right-of-way on Federal and Lowell for widening?
Councillor Smith, give us a moment while we might look up something. In fact, why don't we get back to you, if that's okay, on that question? We'll look it up in our files and get back with you on that question.
Sure. Just because I, prior to me being on council, I attended one of your open houses at Crown Point, and I believe that at that time, the only improvement would be And I believe that at that time, the only improvement would be the turn lanes as far as continuous lane, the, what do you call them, the acceleration lanes? And so that's why when, I think it was mentioned that there would be widening, so it seems like there was more thought into increasing these roadways. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. There is road sections that will be widened on Lowell, in particular between 84th and 88th. And the engineer mentioned that that will chew into the uplands land to the east as opposed to right of way to the west. And I think those improvements, I cannot, without the plans, Counselor Smith, I can't tell you what the specific improvements are. Some of them include acceleration and deceleration lanes, but also include bike lanes, sidewalks, improvement, et cetera, other through lanes. And I'll let our engineer maybe give you some more detail.
Hi, Counselor Smith. I'm going to give you some information that's actually on the PDP that we have. And these are still items that we're working through with the city. So in, in general, the question on Federal is, is what is the existing right of way right now? It's about 100 foot. Ultimately, we're looking at about 120, maybe 130 in some locations. And what we have discussed so far is that if you think about Federal between 84th and 88th, it's currently two lanes in each direction. And then there's a shoulder out there. We actually formalized that shoulder into a through movement or turn lanes or auxiliary lanes that you're talking about through there. So that, that's just a general description of what we are currently talking about. On the Lowell side, what you have is a right of way that's about 60 feet. I'm looking at some of these sections and we're going to go to about 75 to 85 feet. And what that accommodates is, if you think about it, we're, we're not really touching, if we're talking the, the section between 84th and 88th, we're really not touching the, the current residents that are out there today. They'll have their sidewalk, they'll have their parking. But we are adding bike lanes in each direction. And we're also adding, of course, walk and so forth on our side to increase that mobility through this area. So that, that's really what starts to make up that general cross-section that we do have there. And also parking on our side is added. So that's where we, we start to push out, you know, obviously, we're 20, 25 feet in some areas of additional area that we're adding.
Thank you. My last question, and it speaks to number six, is the proposed amendment furthers an important public policy as in the protection of historic resources. Can you speak to your project in, and you may have said it, but I, I didn't grasp it, so which is why I'm asking, is how is the project protecting these historic resources?
Counselor Smith, thank you for your question. The most important role that we play in protecting historic resources out on the site is to make sure that the church keeps the 100 acres roughly that they're keeping, which contains the, the only historic structures and sites on this entire project. That building, the castle, is actually on the National Historic Register and has been since 1979. Our funds that we're paying for this land will allow that church to continue to operate in their mission and therefore protect that architectural treasure.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Ms. Sykes?
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of the questions from the residents and the answers that the applicant has provided and that staff has provided. I, I think that residents did a great job raising a lot of questions. If I don't ask one of your questions, it's because tonight I am strictly supposed to weigh the marginal difference between the current comp plan zoning and the request. And so I'm trying to try to focus my questions on those, but, so bear with me. Multiple residents asked questions that I don't, I think that Counselor Smith just started to, to address, which is, we've talked a lot about the transitions to different residential development type or business and commercial development type. But this is a unique situation where we have this castle, this 100-year-old castle adjacent to the process and, or project, or proposed project. Can we talk about planning principles when you have something like this? What is typical comprehensive plan, what, what type of transitions do we see around something like that? Recognizing that it is somewhat unique. But we've talked about planning principles when it comes to other types of development, so I'm, I'm wondering if we can get a refresher on that.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. So I'd be glad to answer that question. I, I think from my studies of planning, usually a large civic amenities such as the castle or historic resource usually becomes the focal point of a development. And development usually centers around that and focuses on that. If you look at more grandiose things such as DC, they build things such as the mall and that kind of is public space which surrounds those historic resources and provides a space for people to gather around that. So you could see something as a park or some sort of, you know, a tree-lined avenue that would lead towards the castle and kind of frame it as a, as a vista or something to an end of the large street. Various types of housing and large development can be common around there. I think that the, this is kind of an interesting question you have because the castle itself is not in city limits. The city does not have municipal jurisdiction over the castle property. And it's not part of the request for them to annex it inside the city limits. That's, that's one of their applications is to annex a small portion of the property. So we largely don't have control over the small campus around the actual castle itself, so we would only have the ability to kind of frame development on parcel A or parcel B to kind of enhance that property. Given that we have a view corridor which designates across parcel B and kind of says there shall be, there shall be no development and that view corridor shall be preserved, it kind of limits what we would kind of consider of putting any sort of large development near those, those historic resources. So we couldn't put an apartment complex or we couldn't put commercial retail opportunities for people to use when they are at that historic property. But I think that if you look at some of the other large historic resources, even in Colorado, go to this, the state Capitol building or such, they're usually surrounded by a park and then other government facilities and retail commercial opportunities along with housing.
Thank you. I just wrote down all my questions in a row. Because we are trying to focus on this marginal change, can we describe why having residential R8 is preferable over office for parcel D? And then also, as part of that question, can I ask, what are the typical, and I recognize there's going to be a huge variation depending on the type of business, but a 325,000 square foot office building roughly, I mean, we were able to do trip counts roughly, how many employees would that be? Sorry.
Let me start with the, it was the three, the R8, why would that be beneficial? So getting rid of the office land use, when that was analyzed by this, the city in coordination with the economic development staff, it was determined that that office designation is not necessary to our kind of goals of creating more office space in the city or just in the neighborhood in this area. We have other vacant office spaces that could be leased out that are underutilized. And there is more vacant land with office designation that could be built. Some of our business, some of our office industrial parks still are not built out as well throughout the city. The change to R8 residential, originally the applicant actually was asking for R18 and city staff scaled them back to R8. And that had a lot to do with total water usage and the adjacency to other uses. R8, we think will work with the grade. It does provide a variety of housing products that would be allowed. And that is under the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment priority that we believe city council had under that 2017 Housing Needs Assessment. So we think that R8 would satisfy those, those two priorities there. It could be buildable. The 325,000 square feet of office, that's just, as I think Marcus had alluded to, we were planning for the max when we did this analysis. That would be essentially the maximum amount of office square footage that somebody could build on a site. I do not think that's realistic that anybody could ever build 325,000 square feet. And I don't think that the traffic engineer who report, who did the traffic summaries thought that either because they actually reduced that number down to about 167,000 if you look at their traffic summaries. So they actually were only thinking of building about half of that total square footage of office if somebody were to ever build that. As far as employee count, I mentioned the employee count would be in the several hundred. So 300 to 500 employees for an office building that size.
For an office building, I'm sorry, you, you've mentioned that you didn't think it would ever be to the 325,000. So are you meaning for the one that they did the traffic count for at about?
Yeah, so offices are usually built somewhere between 80 square feet to 100 square feet per employee.
Okay.
So that's, I have to do the math here.
Sorry.
Let me get a calculator out.
It feels relevant because that's, we're comparing the difference, so.
So I'm going to do it off the 160,000 square feet instead of the, the 320, unless you'd like me to do both.
I'd like to do both because I think if we're, if we're comparing with the maximum density that they could have at R8, we should probably like do both that range.
Sure.
We have the high number as well.
So if they did 160,000 square feet and it was a ratio of one employee to 100 square feet of office space, that'd be 1,600 employees. And then 320, it would be double of that, so 320, or 3,200 employees potentially.
There was a, a question raised, and I recognize that this will get much more defined when, if, if it was to go through to the next, to the PDP process, but it is one of the standards that we have to look at. There seemed to be an assertion from a resident that if we were to go to smaller lot sizes, it would create more runoff and more drainage problems. My presumption is that our requirements to handle drainage contemplate smaller lot sizes, but can you speak to that? That would be, wouldn't that, that, my, my understanding is that would be the developer's responsibility regardless?
The answer is yes, but go ahead.
Answer is yes. Drama, right?
You're passing the buck on that one.
Yes. Obviously, we have city requirements to follow. And that is one thing that I, that I probably should have touched on before in my summary as well, is this project again is bringing a, a great improvement to the area because if you think about the land today, there are no detention facilities, there are no water quality facilities that are out there today just to take the historic runoff coming from here. And you already get flooding that happens down Shaw. This project actually will not only mitigate its drainage flow, it'll cut that flow down even more to even less historic to accommodate what is, what is the existing infrastructure that's out there for the city today. When we're talking about larger lots compared to smaller lots, you know, if we're talking 7,000 square foot lots and we're, we're actually have sod on all that compared to smaller lots in that R5 range, a lot of times what you see there is, the numbers are pretty close to being the same when you, when you think about it in the, in the overall context. You may get a little bit more when you're talking R5 because we introduce alleys into that situation. Those are less impervious areas. But again, no matter what we would create there, we would still handle all those flows before they ever got off-site. And again, our project would probably mitigate those down to less than what they're seeing today because of what, because there's no infrastructure there today at all.
Okay.
Hopefully that helps.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Sykes, I wanted to provide a separate analysis of your office employment category, because we did do this as part of our analysis of looking at the office loss. If, a different perspective, and I kind of quoted you on what would be the maximum that most people build under the building code for office occupancy. So under the comprehensive plan on page 2-31 in table 2-1, we provide a ratio of jobs to the total building square feet in the city. And on parcel E, or parcel D, assuming that they built a 325,000 square foot building, under the ratio of what most employment uses or commercial spaces or office uses are, are currently employed at, that would be 679 jobs.
Okay.
And so it, I think it would largely depend on the employer and the type of business that was ultimately put in there and how much space they reserve for uses that are not just dedicated to office space for employees.
Thank, thank you. I'm going to, okay. We heard a little bit, there were some questions, I believe earlier on from Counselor Smith, and then also, I believe a resident who lives in Bradburn talked about density of the, of the various projects. I was wondering if you could give us a comparative zoning? I recognize there's multiple probably comp plan zoning or land use designations within Bradburn, but could you let us know what those are? And I know you might not have that off the top of your...
Yeah, so Counselor, so Bradburn has, and the zoning designation is planned unit development. The comprehensive plan land use designation for Bradburn is just one category and it's T-Mund.
All T-Mund.
The entire thing is T-Mund.
Okay, thank you. Can you remind me of the full acreage or the size of Lot E?
Yes, Lot, parcel E is, we refer to it as 1.2 acres.
1.2 acres. I guess I have some concern, and please stop me if this is more appropriate for another, if this is not appropriate for my consideration for the comp plan, but I do have some concern about this being used as a portion of the PLD. The same reasons that it wasn't very accessible for its current designation, like that there's not road access, makes it to me not that valuable of a piece of public park or public open space.
So Counselor Sykes, I would say that that's something that we are discussing as part of the PDP, and I'll just allude to it now. The city staff does not think that would be valuable for the city to take as public land dedication. The parcel does have a sewer lift station on it. We already have an easement for that. We have an easement for our utility lines. And we don't think it would be a valuable addition to the city's ownership assets as public land dedication. And they can use it as part of the private land, or part of their private park requirement for some of their property.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear the city shares my concern there. I have a question about one of the stipulations that is requested, the delayed effective date of this ordinance to be specifically tied to the land sale of the property and that this comp plan would be void, this amendment would be void if that was to not go through. For me, I'm looking at this rationally, and if this is the highest and best use of the land and it's most in compliance with the goals and objective of our comp plan and other plans, why would we not just want that indefinitely? Why would we ask for that to be conditional?
Ms. Decker?
It's, there's a contract between the seller and the purchaser, and that was a requirement of their purchase and sale agreement. But so that if they didn't close on the property, then the entitlements would not be effective. And I know the applicant has their attorney here to speak to this as well.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Rockwell from the law firm of Kaplan, Kirsten, Rockwell, and we represent the applicant. And that's correct, what Ms. Decker said is that the property owner does not want any of these entitlements to actually apply to the property unless a closing occurs, which is why we have the delayed effective date of this particular, of the ordinances with regard to the comp plan amendments as well as any future approvals that come forward will have the same delay in the effective date.
Thank you. I appreciate that and understand that's where, the providence of it. My concern from a public policy point of view is the reason that local government has a restriction over land use is because it's to promote a public benefit, to promote a public policy. So I guess I might have questions for you later about this. Let me think on this a touch. Thank you so much. I have one last question, or actually two more. There was a, a comment that 26% of the city is currently R3.5. the city is currently R3.5. That, that statement is based off of land, land size, correct? Not based off percentage of residences?
Correct. That's based off land area. And I believe the applicant quoted that from the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Do we know what it is, percentage of residences?
I believe it's in the comp plan. I could look it up and see if I can get you an answer.
I don't have it memorized. So if you could, I would appreciate it.
We need some time to look it up.
Yeah, I apologize. I have a note that says, reference Mr. Palmer's question, and I'm trying to look and see which question it specifically was. I apologize. I didn't write strong enough notes for myself. Thank you. I found it. I believe a resident, Mr. Palmer, stated that our traffic impact study and, and the water resource study were based off of data from 2013. My question for staff is, is that accurate? Or are those iterative documents? So they're, they're not static in time, but they have considered the developments and changes that have occurred in those corridors during that period of time? Or are they using 2013 data? And I apologize if that was poorly spoken.
Yeah. Can you just repeat that? Because we're both trying to focus on something.
I believe that there was a statement, one of the resident's statements, that the traffic impact study and the water resource impact analysis were both used, are both using data that was from 2013. So seven-year-old data to determine the impacts. And I'm asking, was that correct? Or has it, have the changes that have occurred in the area, were those considered when the, what was the data at the time point of the data use as a baseline?
Mayor Protem Sykes, so the traffic, and do you, basically the traffic analysis are based off ITE codes. And it's just a static analysis as how much traffic is generated by use type. It has nothing to do with the city's comp plans. We use a, I believe, an internationally recognized document from an engineer, from the engineers to generate those figures. And that's what the applicant uses as well. It's not something that we created inside of our account. The city did not create and adopt those standards as part of its comp plan. The water supply plan that I believe Mr. Palmer was referring to, so the city created a water supply plan in 2013 as a part of doing the comprehensive plan and linked those two together. That water supply plan is, and what we're using for analysis for these amendments is from that 2013 water supply, supply plan.
Let me turn it over to Mr. Tripp.
Max Kirschbaum, Public Works Director, do you have anything to add to that?
I think Jacob stated it well. I would just say it's still valid. It's still accurate because what was done in 2013 is essentially water budgets were established and assigned to land use classifications. So it's, it remains valid. And for the two and a half years that we've been working together, we, one, one area that we certainly have had agreement upon is that, that the total water usage as, as they would foresee it for, across all of the parcels, would be within what we've established as the water budgets for the sum of the five.
Okay. Thank you. And then I, I need to follow up on that traffic question quickly. So the traffic data that we get, doesn't it take into consideration the capacity of the existing corridors?
Yeah.
With the existing traffic? And so what I'm wondering is, has it considered, I guess, the capacity because of all of the other?
Counsel, Heath Klein, Transportation Engineer. So yes, the applicant does traffic counts and does the analysis based on the numbers that they record at that time. It is not based on the comp plan. The last time that the city had a comprehensive roadway master plan was in 2008, and we are currently underway on our transportation and mobility plan, which will update some of those numbers. But the applicant did do current day traffic counts, and that is what is used for the analysis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sykes, I have an answer for you on the question you had. So in, in the comprehensive plan, you were asking about how many units are R3.5. The only data I have available for that right now is from table 2-1. And this is grouping R3.5 and R5 together. And it said in existing development in 2013, we had 25,665 units. And the total residential units in the city, excuse me, the total residential units in the city were 44,979.
Okay. Hard, okay.
All right, counsel, at this time, I'm going to give you a couple of options. One, there may be a question that was presented. The city attorney attempted to answer that may be of value to move into an executive session and let her answer that from a legal standpoint and give you any guidance. If you have any other questions, from a legal standpoint, we would also entertain those in executive session. However, if there are none, we will skip an executive session. But I would recommend to you that you take a few minutes to gather your thoughts. We would take a break for a period of time to give everybody a chance to look at their notes, think about what their thoughts are. But I would close all the public hearing. There would be no more questions of staff or the applicant. But the testimony from the public is already closed. Is there anyone who feels they want to have that opportunity? And Ms. Decker, I'll turn to you first.
We don't go into executive session. There is one thing I would like to clarify on the record.
Okay. Is there any question from any member of the council that they would like to go into an executive session to receive any kind of legal guidance from the city attorney?
I actually have a follow-up question off of one of the questions one of the other counselors asked before we go down that route, if I could quickly ask.
Okay.
So to the applicant, you had said when we were talking about the, the difference between what would happen with the R3.5 and R5, you talked a lot about what you would do with the lots as well as the building material. I imagine either way, from what I've seen of your development, those, some of those things are going to happen no matter what the designation is. I imagine you're going to try to use sustainable building materials and try to do best practices to, you know, lower water consumption, no matter what the lot size is. And I just wanted you to clarify that because you use that as kind of a reasoning for the R5 versus R3.5, and I was curious about that.
Sure. Counselor Demont, happy to answer the question. I think the question, if I misunderstood the question, I can restate it. But I think the question was, what are some of the things that you would use to use to be more sustainable, R5 versus R3? What are some of the primary differences? If, you know, you're lining up the way we would build R3, R3.5 versus R5, I think the primary difference would probably be the water usage associated with irrigation and landscaping of that lot. And I think, and I'm going to go out on a limb here, my engineer will tell me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking over half of the water consumption in a home like that is exactly for that yard. And so it's actually a huge portion of your home's water consumption is watering your yard. So I think the primary difference in just isolating sustainability between the way we would build R3.5 and the way we would build R5 would be that water consumption. In terms of sustainable, sustainable building materials, I agree with you. There's no reason that we would use it for some classifications and not others. So I hope that clarifies it for you.
It does. I'm just trying to think through it because this has been a big discussion for us in general, even in R3.5 in a neighborhood like mine, that is that classification.
Right.
Zero escaping things. I was just trying to understand exactly where you're going, but that makes sense with what, how you're explaining how you guys would develop it. So I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Decker, your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of the applicant, if city council will not agree to the delayed effective date, the application is deemed withdrawn. So that would be all three amendments if this, if the council will not agree to that delayed effective date.
Does that create any questions, counsel?
It does. So if, if, say, for example, I didn't, or council didn't approve one of these, so technically it wouldn't approve that, that for that portion, does that then withdraw their whole application for all parts?
It would just withdraw the application for the specific comp plan amendment.
For that parcel?
Wait, let me clarify the question. Are you asking if you don't want to agree to the delayed effective date on just one of the applications?
I'm saying so technically, I'm thinking through this, if we didn't say agree to F2, which is one of the parcels, and thereby that effective date for that parcel wouldn't be in play, right? Because we didn't agree to the amendment for that one.
Correct.
Then does that take all of their applications out? Or does it even take that application out? That's the part I was.
Well, that application would just be, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So then that one would go away, but the other ones would continue.
It would still just be denied because what they don't, the intent is that the entitlement not be in place until they transfer the property. So then the denial would still be applicable, but, and it would not affect the other two.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Counselors, may I provide a little bit of background on this provision? Because there's been some discussion about it and some questions. You know, I've been in this business for, gosh, over two decades now, both as an attorney and now as a developer. And this is really typical of very large, complex projects as opposed to less subdivision level projects. There's so much that gets very, very specific to this specific project, and more so in the PDP and onward. And if that specific project, which is really tied to our team, was not ultimately, we didn't ultimately close on the property and enact that, it's very, very, very typical across a lot of jurisdictions in Colorado, which we've researched, for the seller, which they have done in this case, not us, to demand that. And so that is a seller requirement. We have had extensive conversations with the legal department at the city over a number of months to make sure this is legal. I'll let your, your legal counsel address you in terms of how legal it is. But I want to make sure that you all understand this is something that is pretty typical for large land sellers, to ensure that something doesn't bind them, that they didn't actually design themselves. And they are not developers. So I, I've probably been a, been a party for, to a half a dozen of these over the 15 master plans that I've done. And it's pretty typical, as we've discussed with Kristen and others.
Ms. Decker?
And say, and Counselor Demont, when there is a denial, there is not an ordinance passed. So it just wouldn't, there wouldn't be an ordinance.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I'm just curious, since there's three of them and it's the same developer.
Right. It would not affect the other two.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions from everyone? Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I don't mean to be dense here. I'm just trying to really get clarity. So if we were to deny it as a council tonight, it would revert, it would be done, it would come off the table, and everything would revert back to the current zoning of 3.5?
It would just stay the same. Yes.
It doesn't revert back because we haven't changed it.
It wouldn't revert because it never changed.
So the developer is saying they would not develop the land if we denied it tonight? I, I guess I understood at one point that if we denied, you would probably still continue forward with approval or development?
So, yeah. So Counselor Scully, I think this question's kind of batting about, like, what happens if, if one portion of the three amendments is denied? It's probably a question we really can't answer for you in terms of, this is, these are amendments that were requested by your staff and, and backed by your planning commission. So to be really frank, we have not contemplated either one or all three failing and what our actions would be thereafter. I know that's not the answer that snaps it together for you, but I'm on it, just being honest with you, that is a question mark.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Decker, I, just to clarify, we're not approving or disproving the effective date. We're, we're approving or disproving the, we're not approving the parcel amendments, correct?
That's correct, but the effective date language is included within the ordinance.
With the parcels. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Sykes?
Um, I, yeah.
Come on, I'm in.
Yeah, yeah, let's let her go first.
I also just wanted to clarify on that, on the effective date comment, which is that your code in section 8.3 states that the effective date of all ordinances shall be the date of enactment after passage on second reading or as prescribed therein. So you have the ability to delay the effective date in the ordinance itself. And you'll see that language in all three of the ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Or do you want to ask a question first?
No, I was going to second your motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning, oh, shoot, the standards for approval of land use plan amendments pursuant to CRS section 24-6-402, 4B, and section 1-11-3C3 of the Westminster Municipal Code, specifically for the Uplands Development.
Second.
Mr. Demont, we have a motion to second. Do you need comments by counsel? Mr. Seymour, your order. Do you have a question? Okay. At this point, all those in favor of adjourning into an executive session to receive legal guidance as described in the motion, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We will adjourn at, yeah. I don't know yet, Mr. Tripp. Yeah, we're, I think there's some questions. We're looking for some legal guidance on before we finalize. At this point, it's approximately 9:55. We will adjourn into executive session and be back as quick as we can.[1604.71] back as quick as we can.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you where you're at. You can just stay where you're at, we're not coming back in. So we have been able to get our questions from the attorneys answered. However, we have gathered a lot of information and thoughts last night and tonight. Couple of council members would like to go through their notes, make sure that they're prepared to come out and render a decision. I told them, as soon as they are all seated, we will call a meeting back to order. 10 to 15 minutes is what I think they're going to be looking at, just to go through and review everything and be prepared. So if I can, please relax for a bit. If you need to go outside, that's okay. I will ask you to stay out and away from the doorway of the boardroom so they can talk among themselves. We'll be back hopefully in about 15 minutes.
I heard their lecture.
I heard their lecture.
Okay, everyone, if you would, please take your seats. Okay, at this time in the process, we have completed all public comments. We have had final comments and rebuttal from the property owner and the applicant. All final comments from staff and the city staff and their recommendations has been noted. Counsel has completed all questioning. At this time, the public hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda will be a motion for item F two, which is Counselor's Bill number three. Counsel, we need a motion. Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Counselor's Bill number three. I'm first reading to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment for parcel B. A request to change the land use designation from residential R three point five to residential R dash five. This recommendation is based on a finding that the amendment generally meets the criteria set forth in section eleven dash five dash twenty-one B of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Is there a second to the motion? Special Seymour?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, you've had a lot of time, I'm not sure if you want to discuss this or not, but if anyone has any comments they'd like to make. Floor is open. Hey, Counsel, this is a roll call.
I'm sorry, I'm slow to draw here.
All right, Ms. Thanks.
Um, so I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, this is a very difficult decision for multiple reasons. Um, one is because there is really no other site like this in Westminster to make a determination, um, or to kind of give myself precedent on, on what to do, um, with this site. Also is because of the constraints that I have right now to make my determination. We are really bound by the, the ten criteria that we have before us. So, struggled a lot with this. There were comments that were made that I jotted down as we went that really have been kind of guiding me. I, I do agree that right now we have to focus on what is the public purpose, the best public purpose, and what is orderly growth. Um, that's the goal of our comp plan, that's the goal of us when we're evaluating any amendment, is to determine how do we marry those two, um, so that we're serving the residents, um, of today and tomorrow, um, and also honoring, um, our legacy and what people enjoy about this community. And I heard a lot from the community, you guys enjoy your breathing room, you love your neighborhood. I also heard from the developer that they're very community-centered, um, value and vision in mind. And while I applaud their idea for attainable by design, um, you know, that didn't weigh as heavily in my decision because I do believe the market will dictate the prices to some degree. I recognize that a smaller scale, uh, R five is always going to be, um, more affordable than a R three point five of, of a similar design standard. So, so looking at that. I am going to make a lot of people unhappy right now, but I am going to support this amendment based off of the criteria we have, but it is shaky. I will tell you, I am very concerned that this just meets the threshold of a comp plan change. Specifically items seven and eight, um, I really hope will be addressed in the PDP, and I will be looking very closely to make sure that they are. We know that this will have an impact, um, on our, our infrastructure, um, on our transportation, on our drainage, um, on our parks and open spaces. That has been discussed in our, in our point that our staff has recommended that this has met that, that threshold. I want to see what is going to happen with the PDP, and I am going to be looking at that closely because my goal is to serve this community now and in the future, and I have concerns about the sustainability of something that would have such a great impact on us. I am very concerned about the uniqueness of this neighborhood. And so we'll need to see what this looks like in the PDP process to see how that, um, transitions. This is very different than anything I've ever done. This is really our namesake. I drive by this every single day, um, and, and look at those beautiful views, and I know that with, there is not a drop of hyperbole in the amount of love and affection that every single resident, um, used to describe those views and how worried they are about losing them. Um, and, and they're not alone. Anyone who drives on Lowell or on, um, federal, I think shares that concern. But I do have a duty to due process, and I do have a duty to follow the ordinances that we have equitably. And I feel that we've met this threshold, and so I am going to be voting to go forward with this, this plan. But I will, um, commit that I am going to have a very cautious eye on the next steps. So, thank you for all of your time, I'm sorry to disappoint you, um, but I have to do what I think is, is right by what I'm charged with.
Ms. Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank staff, um, the applicant, and more importantly, our residents, um, for coming out and staying with us for two nights, uh, and really telling us your thoughts. Some of you have noted that these aren't easy decisions for us, and I thank you for recognizing that because I don't take, uh, decisions lightly. As a candidate last year, I heard residents say that, um, they weren't opposed to growth, that they want it responsible and strategic. Um, I also had major concerns when past councils have changed comprehensive plans. I think that this has outbalanced, um, us in a lot of ways. But when you look at these as three, um, individual parcels, it's, it's clear that we are taking this out of the comp plan of what we said in two thousand thirteen. But as a whole, when we're looking at five parcels, we're reducing what's allowed from thirty-eight hundred units to twenty-three hundred units. And by that, as a whole, I think that we're taking into account the pros and cons. The pros that I've heard are that it adds diversity in housing and has owner-occupied units, as opposed to apartments. It wouldn't negatively impact our schools. It provides updated and upgraded drainage and sidewalk, sidewalks. And will benefit local businesses and will be attractive for employers and employees. Some of the cons, and this is where I will be specifically looking in a PDP and PUD, is the traffic on federal and Lowell. Do we have enough water and infrastructure? That will always be a concern, um, for residents and at the top of, uh, council's concerns. Density is a concern in the comprehensive plan changes. And looking at the pros and cons of all of these, um, we do have to abide by our ten criteria that's set before us. And overall, um, I will be approving this, um, as the three parcels, um, for zoning. Um, and I really, I, I think, um, in all of my notes, I, I've heard a lot from, um, both, both perspectives. And I feel in this development, this has had the most, from my perspective, um, the most dedication and research into trying to hear residents and what their concerns and wants and needs are for this area by abiding by the, um, by, excuse me, by, um, adhering to open space and preserving views. Um, that was listed in the presentation. I expect, um, and will look for, that to be in further processes. And I think that by the rest of the criteria, it meets, um, and attainable housing, protecting of historic resources. This is really a historic place in our, our city, um, and I really believe that, um, there has been some thought and real dedication to making this the most appropriate for what it can be. So my vote will be yes tonight.
Mr. Demak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So throughout these three, I may make some of you happy and some of you mad, so, uh, I'm gonna kind of lay it out now, and then we can vote on these three different items. I'm gonna be voting no on parcel B specifically. I want to thank everybody, like my colleagues did, for coming out. I enjoy hearing from the residents, I think we have a very talented group of developers who, um, are bringing a project before us. I think, so much so that they probably will be able to overcome this particular parcel and still be able to deliver a quality project to Westminster. Um, however, I do not think that the B parcel for me, um, meets criteria eight as far as the transportation and part of eight, or I'll read eight, is the proposed amendment will not negatively impact transportation system, drainage, water, sewer, infrastructure, water supply, fire, police services, and parks, and the open space, or the city general fund, uh, revenue. And so specifically, I'm concerned about traffic with that one being away from the main arterial roads. I think that that could be a problem, as well as number two, the proposed amendment serves a substantial public purpose and will not substanti- substantially, um, be detrimental to the surrounding lands. I, I just don't see that fitting in that one with, with those other surrounding areas. I, I like the other, other things for the same reasons, I think that, you know, their vicinity to the, to federal and eighty-fourth, I think those are good develop, developments, and I'm gonna be, um, pleased to support that portion of it, but I will not be supporting parcel B.
Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As my, as with my fellow counselors, this took a lot of thought, a lot of processing. I want to thank everybody who came out and testified. I think it takes a lot of, um, investment to come out and be heard and, and speak in public about your feelings and your concerns, and so I applaud you, thank you. Thank you for all of the facts that, um, we threw at you pretty much on the, on the vi here, you know, just hoping you could answer them, and thank you to city staff because you were tremendous in getting our questions answered quickly. I, too, tonight will be voting in support of all three amendments, and, um, I want to explain why. I really went through this, I took into consideration three things. I looked at the comp plan, I looked at the planning commission's comments and their vote, and I looked at the standards that we are held to uphold. The, the planning commission approved it, a seven zero vote. The comp plan, it is an adjustment, it is an amendment, but our comp plan is a live document, and it is coming up for review again, and will be a, a new comp plan coming out soon. And I believe that at that time, we will have to relook at our lands again. So it came down to how do we meet these standards? And I had several questions as we went through these nights, I listened to the residents, I listened to the developer, I listened to the city, and how, um, how they answered certain questions for me. And it really came down to, um, um, parcel B. The, the only question I had, originally I really sat on, we should just stay with a three point five, but what really swung me over was the idea that if we go to a five, we can create a smaller parcel, which will move the houses a little closer together and away from the other area, and that made a big impact to me, that with that flexibility, that makes a big difference in how that land will sit. I also really liked the idea, so I'm hoping that it was a truthful statement and it's going to be followed through with, is a park at the top. Um, I do go to that area, I drive Lowell all the time, it's my favorite fast route through Westminster. It's not fast, it just has less traffic on it. But I love to drive that, and I love it because of the vistas. I love to look at the vistas, um, I've rigged my bike out there, I've taken walks out there, I don't want those gone. So I'm expecting that the open space, the view, the vista areas will be capped and that park will be in place, and that, um, especially our residents who already have homes there will not be losing their views, because I think that's really important. I understand that people buy homes because of the beautiful views they have. But I also was thinking about when I was walking, um, last summer in residence areas and talking to different residents, and I happened to be in the Highland Green area, and I was up on top of a hill, and I was very impressed with how the houses were built on that hill and how well I could still see three sixty of the city, and I thought, that, that's what this is all about, is that we don't limit ourselves, we, we plan that growth, we figure out how to keep those vistas, we figure out how to keep that open space, because that is what's important to us. The reality is we still need rooftops as well, and we need to provide those rooftops for our missing middle. And I know that the missing middle's cost is quite high, I'm not sure we have a middle anymore, I think we have high and we have low. But this is a, this is a, a chance for us to try to see if we can be creative and we can be different and, and hit that missing middle, so. Traffic was a concern, but I felt that the city really addressed that, thank you, Mr. Klein. I also felt that the developer also is aware of that traffic concern and has ideas. I really liked the idea of a tunnel under federal, I, I don't know whose idea that was, but I really liked it, so, I'm hoping that is also a true statement. And the water, the water is always a concern, and we're banking a lot on what we're being told is, is correct and that the estimates are correct, and we're gonna be able to make it. I know this was already considered in our water, um, cost, so I believe that we will have enough water, and so that was in the end not a real big question for me. So that is how I got to this. D, I will be approving, but I guess I can discuss that later, because we're on B.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, um, and honor everyone's time tonight, but on, uh, since B is in front of us, I'll, I'll keep my comments to that. Uh, I will be voting, uh, against this because I find that in criteria number two- I will be voting against this because I find that in Criteria Number Two, that it does not serve a substantial public purpose, and also Criteria Three, this will change the nature of the neighboring area, so I'll be voting against B.
Volz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for being here. Thank you, staff, for all of your hard work for a couple nights' worth of being with us. Thank you applicants for all of your work to come here and be here tonight, and then especially residents who are here and share their thoughts and their concerns, and through this process, it was clear that you love your neighborhood, and this is a city made up of great neighborhoods. So, I will say that I will not be supporting this, so I will be a no vote on this particular motion. And my reasons include Criteria Number Two, proposed amendment serves substantial public purpose and will not substantially detrimental or be detrimental to surrounding lands. I don't, that doesn't add up for me. So, the two criteria, number two and number eight, so I will be voting no for those two reasons tonight. Thank you.
From the standpoint of where we're at right now, we've gone through a huge process for an application that's at step one. We have a number of steps regardless of what happens tonight on these three. If they pass, then there is still the PDP, the ODP, annexation, the closings. And what has been committed to, and verbally at least by the applicant, we have checkpoints on each one of those to see that what you have told us here in the public hearing and that the planning commission is that you're living up to those comments. And in any one of those points, if you're not, you're probably gonna lose it. I'm gonna be very frank. We have people who are invested a lot of time, staff. I could find no fault with the planning commission decisions. I could find no fault with what the staff said they could recommend based upon where we're at for what we have in the 10 criteria for tonight. With that, I am, like some of the others, I could find no reason not to support the motion that's before us, but we still have two more.
All right. At this point, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Demott?
No.
Counselor, Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
No.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
No.
Mayor Acheson?
Yes. On this motion, the motion passes on a 4-3 vote. We'll move on to item, excuse me, F3, Counselor's Bill Number Four.
Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number Four on first reading to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment for Parcel D, a request to change the land use designation from office to residential R8. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment generally meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21B of the Municipal Code.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? If not, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Acheson?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
There we go. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is Counselor's Bill Number Five. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number Five on first reading to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment for Parcel E, a request to change the land use designation from office to private parks and private open space. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment generally meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21B of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Counselor's Bill Number Five? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Acheson?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
And that motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business for tonight. As far as with the council actions, I do need a motion from the council before we adjourn in order to extend the previously approved council meetings by 13 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion was to carry the completion time of the council by 13 minutes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please go home and be safe. Audience, thank you for being here tonight.